A journey out of our regular city council agenda meeting. And now we are going into our truth and taxation hearing, public hearing. Item number three, fiscal year 2023 property tax rate. We're gonna, we're gonna do a public hearing. Before we go into the public hearing, we do have some slides. I'll make a reminder maybe of the public hearing process before, before we go into it after these slides. But public hearing, Spanish Fork, not only a good, good practice in all public meetings, but especially in Spanish Fork, try to, when we're having public hearings, make sure there's no, you know, audible claps or gestures or hurrah's or yells on, you know, one side or the other here. There's an invitation to the public to come be heard and talk and be, you know, speaker piece, if you will. But we want to hear from everybody. And, and so if somebody might feel intimidated if, you know, the room's one way or the other and not stand up, we would not, we would be sad to not be able to hear from that person. So let's make sure we keep the decorum in our public hearing. And that's usually not a, a problem in Spanish Fork. So we'll do another reminder after that. But fiscal year 2023 property tax rate. Before we go into public hearing, city manager Seth Parons.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and present on this topic. Appreciate all the public that is here. It's always exciting and I think a good thing to have the public participate. Walked out to get something and noticed that there's people even in the, in the foyer there, which is great to have them there. And hopefully if, if they have a moment, or if they'd like to participate in this, they can hear me at some point when we go into that public hearing. They're certainly welcome to come in. So I want to start off by simply addressing what it is we're talking about today. The purpose of the, this property tax increase discussion would be to provide additional funds to construct a recreation center, which would include an indoor and outdoor pools, as well as a senior center. This is something that we've been talking about now as a council for the last couple of months, specifically in some of these meetings. And in June, you, you set at least the possibility of this discussion with the property tax rate. And this is the appropriate moment for us to hold that according to state law. What you did in June was set a tax rate that our, our property tax rate in 2021 was .001129. And it, according to the certified tax rate processes, that rate would have fallen to somewhere in the .008 range. And instead you chose to hold the rate to .00111. You'll see those numbers in a little bit as we talk. I don't think anybody really cares about what that number is. What they probably more specifically care about is what does that do to their property taxes? And, and when we do these kinds of things, we have to work on the averages. And so what this does on the average property is $4.90 on the average home per month, $58.80 per year on the average home. And this year, the average value as assessed by Utah County is $461,000. Jordan, our finance director, will talk a little bit later about this, but I'll emphasize for this moment, assessed value, appraised value, actual value are not always the same. Typically assessed values lag. And then there are other factors associated with that, but Jordan will review those things. So that's the purpose of today's truth and taxation hearing. Wanted to be clear about that. We have just kind of an agenda of what we'll talk about tonight. First of all, we'll be talking about why has the council reached this decision? How do property taxes work? And then a framework of how this project could be funded. And then we hope to, and part of what we do right now is address a number of questions that we have seen and heard through different emails, phone calls, as well as some public comment in social media. Hopefully ahead of time with what we're talking about, be able to answer a lot of those questions so that if somebody has a question here tonight, they might say, oh, okay, now I've got the answer to that and try to, try to address those. And then finally receive that public comment. So why are we here today? First of all, some of the people, some people have said, we talked about this a lot in 2015. Why again today? And we have continued to, we continue to ask questions of the public about what services do we provide that you like? What don't you like? How can we improve? And then every so often we do what is called a master plan study. And we did a recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan update in 2020. We did, we, well, as this slide indicates, we sent about 8,000 surveys by a statistical analysis. The company Y2 Analytics performed this survey. We followed their survey methodology. They threw random selection, found 8,000, identified 8,000 residents, sent surveys out. Typical to surveys, you never get all of them back. And they had about a 20% return rate, which in the survey world is good. And with some 1,400 surveys, they were able to, to complete a statistically valid survey with a margin of error plus or minus two and a half percent. And this is something that we do, like I said, regularly. We've, we send out not statistically significant surveys every year. We call them the residence, residential satisfaction survey. But this one is something that we spent significant effort to make sure that it is scientifically valid because this provides a framework for our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which dictates to us where should we be going as voiced to us by our residents. So in this study, first of all, this kind of shows a geographical representation of where those surveys came from. If, I look at maps all day long, and so this thing looks to me like Mozart's Concerto and whatever. I know exactly where I'm looking. If you don't, if you're not oriented in this map, Councilman Marshall North is up.
Thanks. It's not that funny. Come on.
You gotta come to every council meeting to get some of our inside jokes. But this dark line is I-15 as it heads toward Provo or south towards St. George. This line is Highway 6 as it heads up into Spanish Fork Canyon would be down here. Of course, this is Main Street and Salem, of course, would be down here on the south. So that gives you kind of an orientation Canyon Road, 1100 East, 1400 East, and so on. As you look at this, I think it's really helpful to know where did these surveys come from? And sometimes when we do a survey like this, you worry as the people receiving this, did we get geographical representation? And I think this, as we reviewed this, and of course for you as a council, this is not new. We reviewed this in late 2000 and you approved this as a council in, I think, the spring, late spring of 2021. But just to review for the public here, the geographical representation was, was really well distributed throughout the city. The only places really that we didn't have representation are places that didn't exist. And that would maybe be in this area, Legacy Farms. There are a lot of homes that have come in the last year and a half or so up in that area, but really good representation across the entire city. I'm gonna highlight just a few things that came out of this that are germane to today's discussion. One question that we asked as a part of this was what recreational activities or facilities or programs do you use or participate in besides those previously mentioned in the survey? So this is a question that's somewhere in the middle of the survey, right? Where we've been asking them what facilities they use and so on. Trying to get a sense of what are things that they use in other places that they don't have access to here. This is a word cloud, so if you use word clouds, you know how they work. If you don't, let me explain briefly. The more times a word is, is used, the brighter, the bigger it comes up. And this is used to provide visual representation for the things that we consistently hear over and over again in a survey such as this. And you, as you look at this, you can see again, words that people are continually saying back in their responses. A lot of different things, a lot of different amenities and, but as you look at those, you can see the words that begin to jump off, such as rec center, Provo rec, Springville rec, swimming pool, indoor pool, and so on. A lot of things in there, but those of course are the ones that kind of jumped out. This is another word cloud. What programs or facilities would you be interested in using or participating in that are not currently in Spanish Fork City? Again, when you do surveys, you try to ask questions a few different times, maybe in a few different ways to try to ensure are you, are they understanding your questions? Are we hearing what you're saying and making sure that things collaborate? And again, the residents, as they, as they sent these in, the words that, that jump out more and more are rec center, indoor pool, indoor swimming, indoor track, water park, and so on. As a part of this survey that we did, we asked the residents as they participated in it to have a hypothetical $100. If we gave you a hypothetical $100, what would you spend that on? And this is always a helpful thing for us to know what are the things that are of interest to you. Your answers to that questions could have been whatever. Somebody might've said, I want to put all 100 on this. I want to put all 100 on that. Or they could have broken it down. Everybody's answer was their own. But this gives us an insight as to where did the residents place their money as they chose from a various list of things and/or their own things. I've highlighted a couple of things in here just to maybe draw your eyes to it. I'm gonna focus on the first six or seven though. You can see these, these three red arrows, and I'll jump down this one as well. Four of them were specific, excuse me, specifically, are specifically items that would be, could be contained within a rec center. And of those, if you take the dollar amounts of the averages as they came up, add up to $44.25 of that hypothetical 100. So if you're, as you do this data, again, you're, you're receiving this information from a residence and they're saying, this is important to us. This is how we would spend our dollars. I want to pause for a moment about the discussion today in rec centers and really highlight how important this information is to us as we plan and spend the funds that we have to do the different things that we do. We're here talking about rec centers with this property tax proposition. And so that's these three items here at the top. But the third item is new trails and trailheads. And the fifth item is additional amenities on existing trails. The sixth item is splash pads. And when you get down to those six items, let's go to the seventh item, new neighborhood parks. And so you get down to what would be on the, more dollars. We continually work on all of those and have answered that request. So part of the reason why the all abilities part splash pad is because that's something that the residents said in the survey, we want some additional splash pads. We have a master plan for more trails and we continually add more trails. And so item number three and number five saying we want more trail facilities, that's something we add every year. I think last year we added an additional one and a half miles of trails in the city, maybe slightly more, maybe slightly less. Every year we add more miles of trails here or there. And they don't always happen in sequence like everybody would like, but trails happen as development happens. But sooner or later they all connect and we have this network that we are building that will be, is already amazing and will continue to get more amazing every year. And then new neighborhood parks. This year's budget has funds to construct electric park. It is under construction right now. That's our newest neighborhood park east of Maple Mountain High School. And so by mentioning all of those, you, you can see, get a sense that as we receive this feedback, it's not something that we put out there and then don't care about. It is very much a part of what we, we internalize what is given. This, we take as, as directions from our residents of these are the things that are important to us. And when we do these surveys every year, like I said, we have that residential satisfaction survey that we send out. And master plans, always, we always, always invite residents to participate. All right. As a part of this, we also asked a question, what is the maximum amount of additional annual property tax you would be willing to pay to fund development of the operations of the things you've been talking about? This was an open ended question. We asked them to fill in the blank. And you can see on this that some residents said zero. Some residents said 10, 20, and so on. You can see a large finger, if you will, at 50, another finger at 100, and then, and kind of the bookmark end at 150 per year. And so as we reach back to, again, why we're here today, this property tax increase, $4.90 on the average home, ends up being about $58 a year on that home. That's also in part because that's a little bit less than the average, right, of what this survey said, but as we took to heart what they said they, they could. And as we have been structuring things with our, with the possible funding, which we'll talk about in just a few moments, that, that certainly was something that we took into consideration. All right, I'm gonna sum this up and then I'll invite Jordan to come up and talk about property taxes. These are five findings that came from the survey. This is something that you as a council reviewed, excuse me, reviewed in length in the fall of 20 and the spring of 2020. Approved this in 2020 and we've been working from this master plan. But it talks about, they want fields, sports, or recreation fields as we have them and continue to add them. They want a recreation center and indoor pools is their top request. They're likely to support a bond for a new recreation center and least likely to support a bond for cultural arts programs. They express their willingness to, at that dollar amount. And this is a goal that you as a council often hear Dale talk about, the goal of having a park within walking distance of every home continues to be an important priority. So I think this is intended to answer the question, why are we here today? Some people have asked, we, we certainly have talked about this. And, and there was a vote even in 2015. So why are you talking about this again? And this is the, the answer that you have been grappling with for the last year or so from the results of this is the public continually says this is of interest to us. Is there a better way to do it than how you offered it in 2015? So as we talk, Jordan, and then as I come back up in a few moments, we'll highlight a number of things that, that are different and that hopefully have improved some of the, some of the issues about previous discussions without Jordan.
Seth, before you leave.
Yeah, please. Oh, and sorry, stop us at any time. Yeah, please. Do you mean to go zoom out by chance?
If you wouldn't mind a bigger map. No, so in the context, we said, here's $100, spend it on recreation opportunities throughout wherever, right? We didn't say if you had $100 and you want to spend on anything in the city, like EMS or fire or whatever, you could choose to do that there as well. But over our discussions, we have taken care of some of those other desires that are not germane to recreation. Fire, EMS being some of the most critical ones that over the past, I guess, 12 months that I've been on the council, we have addressed in terms of full time paramedics. I cannot say that word. I knew you would smile when I said it. But we do get requests outside of this recreation and we are trying to address them in context of the whole budget, right? I just want to make that clear. It's really not a question for you, it's sort of an observation for me. As I look through this list, there's some things missing because they're not recreation activities. However, we are doing other things to address those.
For sure. Yeah, and I think it's important to highlight that this was a survey, survey all about, parks and recreation, right? And so not to muddy the water on that and bring in other topics. We could certainly do that about other things. And I, I know that a priority, if not the highest priority to your favorite topic would be transportation, right? That's always the number one issue and that's something that we spend a lot of time, a lot of efforts, certainly with the funds that we have, as well as leveraging county, state, and federal dollars with our, our regional partners on addressing transportation needs and several others as well. I think it's important with what you said, to also address this year's budget adds over $1.6 million to EMS services alone. I want to say it was $200,000 or $300,000 to fire services and then another couple hundred thousand dollars to police. And so if you bundle public safety as a whole, I think there was close to $2 million of additional funds in this year's budget to those.
Ongoing funds.
Yeah. Some of them are one time because maybe it's a purchase of a vehicle or something like that, but most of it, yeah, is ongoing. Yeah, in personnel, usually in personnel. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Mr. Jordan Hales.
All right. I'm, I'm wondering where I went wrong in my, when I was 13, I was in math class and my math teacher, Mr. Cook, said, you know, if you're good at numbers, an accountant is an awesome position. I thought, that's what I'm gonna be. I'm gonna deal with numbers and I'm never gonna have to public speak. So I don't know, I don't know where I went wrong.
I have a very similar story to the same thing, except it was engineering.
Yeah. So I'm gonna explain a little bit about property tax. At its basis, property tax is pretty simple. You take the value, times the rate, and you get a bill. The value is set by the county assessor. He doesn't go and visit all 10,000 plus homes every year. On your tax notice that you would have received in the last week or so, it does say when your last year that your home was assessed. Mine said 2018. And I think they tried to make it out to do some type of an assessment. I don't think they're boots on the ground type of assessment, but they make it out like every three or four years or something. Then you have the tax rate. And that tax rate is set by all of the taxing entities governing bodies. So Neebo School District, a couple of blocks down, they are a governing body and, or they're a government entity. They have a governing body that sets their tax rate. And when you add up all of those different tax bills from all the different governing bodies or taxing entities, then you get your total tax bill. This goes a little bit over the, the calendar of property taxes. So the county assessor has to assign a value to all the properties by May 22nd. The county auditor, he works to calculate something called the certified tax rate that Seth mentioned. I'll get into more as we go. And what that tax rate does is it guarantees the same amount of revenue to the governing, to the taxing entity. That certified tax rate is then communicated to the taxing entity. Ours was .000879, I believe. And you can either choose to use that rate or you can set a rate higher. If you want to set the rate higher, then you have to go through a process known as truth and, truth in taxation, where you notify the public that the rate is gonna be higher and you hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing now.
So not necessarily higher than last year, but higher than the certified rate?
Higher than the certified rate, which would generate more revenue to the city than the prior year.
I think your, when it said typically goes down because this value has gone up and the, the math needs to stay the same.
Yes. It guarantees the same amount, that certified tax rate guarantees the same amount of revenue to the city. The city doesn't get an additional dollar unless they've set a rate higher than the certified tax rate. All right. 22nd, the county, it's out of evaluation notice. Some people might think this is a bill. It's not a bill and it stays on there. It's not a bill. Part of the reason it's not a bill is because it's a proposed tax rate. On my notice, there was three different taxing entities that were in red, which indicated that they were going through the truth and taxation process and setting a rate higher or proposing to have a rate higher than the certified tax rate. Then you have a public hearing, which is what we're doing now. And at the public hearing, the governing body will set the tax rate. All right, so this is the valuation notice. You draw your attention to the top here, you have the market value. For those people that have a, their notice that they're for their primary residents, they'll see a residential exemption. Primary residences get a 45% discount on their property tax. So you take this value here, times it by 45% to get your discount and then you're taxed. So this new number becomes the taxable value. That's the value you're taxed on. You're not taxed on the full assessed value. All right. One thing I've added to this slide is the 21 tax rate, because I think it helps show how that certified tax rate goes down. So if you look at the city's number, last year's .001129, the certified tax rate, which would generate the same amount of revenue, is .000879. So that's where it's holding the city the same. One thing you may notice is that the amount actually went up $6 or $5 and some change there. And some people might say, well, if it's supposed to generate the same amount of revenue, why has that gone up? It generates the same amount of revenue for the city, but within the taxpayers, they can fluctuate up and down. So some people are winners, they're paying a little bit more, or losers, I baby, unless you like paying taxes. So you have some people that are paying a little bit more, some people that are paying a little bit less. But it depends on how your value changed compared to other, the other average properties in town. All right. So this rate here is the certified tax rate and this is the revenue it would generate or the bill you would have if there is no truth and taxation hearing or if the city sets us, keeps the certified tax rate. This is with the proposed increase on the certified tax rate. And then you get the, the total bill. One thing that I thought was kind of deceptive was this 10.8% isn't over last year's amount paid or billed. It's over what it would be if there was no truth and taxation hearing for any of these entities. So this household would have paid $100 more even though there was no, even if there was no tax increase on the rate.
So there's another household somewhere else in Spanish Fork paying $100 less?
Yes. Yep, exactly. And I'll, I'll get into a, a case study that kind of shows that. All right. So this chart shows the, where your property taxes go. So you can see over 75% goes to the school district. Just with our proposed rate, we would be at about 11%. The county around 7%. Central Utah Water Conservancy District at 4%. And then some fees for like assessing and collecting the taxes. Yeah. And this amount here is 2,500 is on the average home in Spanish Fork, which is valued at 460 and 800 bucks. Okay. So knowing I had to present today, I asked my wife this question a couple of days ago. Do taxes capture inflation? She said, I don't even know what you're talking about. So then I asked, well, do taxes increase when the cost of goods go up? When you go and buy a gallon of milk and it costs 50 cents more than last time, does sales tax go up? And she said, yes. And I said, does the same principle apply to property tax? And she said, yes, because as values go up, you pay more because you're taxing on value. And I said, you're wrong. And I've been married 12 years and I should have known better. But Karen's.
Was that gusto? You're wrong.
I, I actually did, because I felt like as like a CPA, like this is the one time right. And no, didn't go over well. But Karen's not watching, but Karen's wrong. It's our secret.
This is recorded.
It is. So we're gonna talk about sales tax first. So you go to, you go to Macy's, you buy a gallon of milk. First year it's $4, sales tax is at 7.25%. You pay 29 cents in tax. Next year you go and buy a gallon of milk, it's gone up a whole buck because we got inflation, you pay 36 cents of tax. The city doesn't have to do a public hearing to capture 30, to capture seven cents more in sales tax. When the cost of milk goes up, the sales tax rate stays flat. That rate stays flat. With property taxes, that rate is driven down. So the amount of tax paid goes up. Now, this same principle does not apply to property tax. So in the case of property tax, no, you don't capture inflation. When the property value goes up, the tax rate goes down and the property tax paid remains the same. The city council or the governing body of the taxing entity can choose to set the rate higher and capture inflation. So if you have a property that is valued at 400,000, goes up 25% to 500,000, the tax rate would be driven down and the certified tax rate would then be lower to generate the same amount of revenue. Yeah. So you can see that the principle for sales tax is different than property tax. So that, understand that. Value goes up, the rate goes down. That's probably the number one misconception I think people have about property tax. They see my value, if you go back to this right here, went from 360,000 to 473,000. This is pretty close to the average, I said, of 461,000. So that's a huge increase in the value, but rest assured, the rate was driven down unless you guys set it higher. All right. So why doesn't property tax capture inflation? It's because of a system, Utah system called truth and taxation. We have laws that govern this. So the objective of these rules is to keep property taxes from rising simply as a result of property increasing. So there's been an argument whether or not the governing body should be able to capture that inflation. And I used to think, yeah, you should have it tied to, to cap, to the value of the home. But the value of homes are pretty volatile, as we've seen in the last few years. So rather than having it tied to the value of the home, I would tie it to something like the cost of goods if you are going, if this state was going to change it. So anytime a taxing entity assesses a property tax rate higher than the certified rate, they must advertise that rate as a tax increase. All right, I'm gonna show how that works here. So here we've got a super tiny town of one home. Yeah. Assessed value of 500,000, they are a primary resident. So they live there, they get the discount, so they're only taxed on 275,000. With a made up rate of 1%, they'd pay 2750 in taxes. The next year, their value goes up, but the rate has to go down so that the tiny town still receives the same amount of revenue. So this would be the certified tax rate. The town could set that rate higher at 1% if they wanted to capture inflation. All right. And this tiny town is gonna double in size. I guess the one resident opened a gas station. You'll notice that they do not get the primary resident discount. So they're taxed on the whole value of that property. So they're gonna pay 5,000. So they're going to pay 5,000 in taxes, 2,500. The town received more revenue without raising the rate due to new development. So that happens here in our town, as we have new development, we're able to have our revenue grow even without having the certified tax rate increase. All right. So we don't have any growth from year three to year four, but both of these homes' values increased. And this is where you get into that tricky thing that Shane mentioned, where you have winners and losers. So because this property increased greater than this property, this one up 50,000, and this one only went up 25,000, their tax bill actually went down. So this property owner might be saying, why did, if the certified tax rate doesn't increase taxes, why did my bill go up? The town says, don't ask us, we receive the same amount of money, and this person apologizes because theirs went down. So hopefully that helps you understand this tricky thing right here, which is, the county's not increasing their rate, they're keeping their rate, but their bill for this home went up $3 and change, okay? So people are sitting there thinking, why am I paying $100 more here than last year? Or $3 on this property? And it's because of that winners and losers, their value didn't go up as much as the average for the city. All right. So here are the averages over the past seven years or so, and I think these have been growing at about a 10% clip, the average assessed value. This was a, I want to think like a 30% increase. So rather than having a small decrease in the rate, you had a larger decrease in the certified rate. So really, I mean, you could have the average value go up 10 times, and the certified rate would just get cut by a 10th, right? So the proposed rate to capture an additional $4.90 per month on the average home in property tax to help fund a rec center is point zero zero one 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 one, which is below last year's rate. This shows the rate-
You went too fast, go back.
Okay.
Please. That is a trend line of our-
That is our property tax rate.
Not the certified rate, but what we actually paid-
That is the actual rate.
Over the last-
Yeah, since 1995.
Thirty years, okay.
And you can see years where the rate increased, and I believe some of these rate increases during the Great Recession were because of the value going down, so then the rate was driven up. That's not very super common, because home values don't generally decrease. So those wouldn't actually be tax increases. Yeah. This is a similar chart, but it's showing other neighboring cities. You can see all of them are being driven down because values have gone up. And you can see how our rate compares to those over time. And then this chart shows our rate compared to other, and some of these other cities are doing truth and taxation, so they, I'm using the proposed rate for other cities. So our rate's around 11, American Fork High at 17, Orem Lowest at 9. And then I added this column, because I thought this was interesting to factor in, the average home value, because that's what you're taxed on, right? So our over, average home value at 460, isn't as high as the highest of Salem, I guess, 68, not as low as the lowest, it's in at 405. So our average property is going to pay 282. The highest, this is actually sorted by this column, American Fork at 479, lowest at Orem at 238. And then this chart is just displaying this column. Yeah, any questions on that?
That's with our proposal.
Yeah, so that's with the higher rate, not the certified tax rate. Yeah, you can see how we would compare. All right. So one question we've been asked about funding the rec center is, why don't you save up and pay cash for the rec center? And I want to help people understand this term intergenerational equity, which means taxpayers should get what they pay for and pay for what they get. Another way of thinking about that is that the people that receive the benefit from a project should be the ones that pay for the project. So the city's in the process of building a sewer plant, who should pay for the sewer plant? Those that are going to use it over the coming decades should pay for the sewer plant, which is why you issue debt to match the timing of those that receive it with those that pay for it. Yeah, so if we saved up for a rec center, it'd be a very, very long time, and those that, by the time we'd finally saved up, those that contributed towards that would not receive the benefit from it. One thing I mentioned is that doesn't new development generate additional tax revenue? And that is the case, but we need to keep in mind that it also generates additional residents to serve and additional infrastructure to maintain. Chief Johnson, you know, every time we were adding thousands of residents, he's like, I need another patrol officer, you know, that comes with growth.
This is probably the type of car that Chief Johnson-
Yeah, I think, Chief Johnson, yeah. All right, one question we get is, what services does property tax pay for? Well, property tax revenue is collected into our general fund, and the general fund revenue helps pay for public safety, so police, fire, and EMS, library, parks, recreation, special events such as feste days we've discussed. Utility services, property tax does not pay for those things, you know, the sewer plant would be paid for from the sewer rate. The water that you drink and use, paid for from the water rate. So property tax doesn't fund those services. And how does our property tax, how much of our revenue comes from property taxes? So in fiscal year '22, which we just finished, we generated $3.7 million in property tax, which was just almost 10% of our total revenue. Just to give you an idea of how that compares to our public safety expenditures, the budget expenditures for the police department, 7.9 million, fire, close to 1.8 million, and the loss on the ambulance projected to be nearly 2 million, and parks, which we don't charge a fee to use, 3.3 million. So the amount of revenue we would generate this year would be 3.794 at the certified tax rate. Yeah, so hopefully that gives people an idea of the scale of property tax compared to what it's helping to fund, because it's not funding, it's only funding part of police, right? If you were to say, oh, I want all my property tax to go to police, that's paying for maybe 60% of the police department for a year. All right, and let me kick it back to Seth to discuss how we're going to fund, how we can fund the bond payments.
Thank you, Jordan.
I like this slide a lot, I think it really helps tell the story of our, how the budget functions. As I visit with people, a lot of times I visit with different groups, different sizes of groups, and they ask, what's the size of the budget? And I tell them, it's $34 million in the general fund, and that's always a big number, because I think, number one, we always equate things to our own personal finances, and 34 million is a very large number. And when I say that number, immediately their eyes start to do some calculations, and then I ask, you're thinking all of that comes from property tax, don't you? And inevitably, the answer is, yes, that's why my property tax bill is so high. And then I tell them, it's actually, your property tax bill is about 3.7 million dollars. And inevitably, then the follow up is, what? How do you have a general fund of 3, 34 million, and property tax is only of 3.7 million dollars? So I think this, this is always a helpful thing to understand what role property taxes play in our budget, and, and that they do, they are not the major source of revenue for the general fund. And in fact, you pick the, the essential service that you want, and you can, you can say, well, that's where my property tax goes, and a lot of them, it doesn't actually cover all of it. So I think that's, that's always helpful to understand. All right, let's talk about funding for this particular project as we, we come here. A lot of great questions through the last couple of months about, how would you fund this? And explain, explain that, so I want to spend just a few moments on that. And to do this right, I need a roaming microphone, I need that whiteboard, and, you know, just the ability to go to town. Shane, would you give me that permission?
I would 100% allow to see you up on the whiteboard.
Dang it, all right, call it my bluff.
I'm not the mayor.
Chad's not it. Chad, if I have, if I draw an old cop car, can I do it?
No.
Dang it, all right, all right, I'll stay here.
Don't get the crayon.
Okay, so we reviewed this in a, in a previous council meeting, and I'll review it here, and I tried to simplify it. In terms of, of the future, we don't have the project designed, we don't have it bid out, so we don't have the exact dollar amounts. We do have really good estimates from architects, as we've done some research on this, and we know that, we know that there's a range that it would cost in what, what the approximate annual bond payment could be. But I think for our purposes, it's really helpful to say that this would have roughly five sources of, of funding to make the bond payment. The first two sources would be RAP tax and property tax. We've talked a lot about property tax, and we'll talk about RAP tax here in just a moment. Sales tax, just general sales tax that comes from the general fund would make up about 10% of that bond payment. Impact fees would make up about 5%. And I'm imagining most people would say, I want that to be the number one source, let growth pay for it. Impact fees don't allow, the impact fee laws don't allow for us to use a growth-related source impact fees to pay for something that we don't yet have, only growth. So if we, in this project, the only element that we think would be eligible for impact fee funding is, we had a pool that was this big, whatever the size is, and now we're going to have a pool that's bigger, growth-related, and it can fund the element of growth-related. Let me equate it to baseball fields. If we have no baseball fields, we cannot use impact fees to build the first baseball field. But once we have one baseball field, we can use impact fees to build the second baseball field, and then the third, and the fourth, and so on. So impact fees isn't a source that we can use in great amounts for this project. We can use some, and I think it's appropriate to use as much of those impact fees as we can for this project, but we do not want to use more than is eligible, because you don't want to run afoul of that part of state law. And then other sources, which would include some outside, maybe some contributions from the school district, donations, maybe there's some sponsorships and things like that. We know of some of those that, that we could have, and that is a part of the equation as well. So if this is a, if this is a project that, that to build costs about $60 million, which is a very large number, but if it's $60 million, the offsetting or the resulting annual bond payment would be, let's say, with interest rates and the time, the term of it would be about $3 million a year. So using that formula, then property tax would, RAP tax and property tax both would pay about 1.2 million toward that, and then sales tax would contribute $300,000, and then those 5% would be about $150,000 each. And that is a collective formula, as we've studied with you, that's a collective formula that we can do. It's feasible, and in many ways, if, if that's how you choose to allocate those funds, it's something that is achievable too. All right, one of the elements of this that is unique to, certainly not, this isn't something that was proposed in, in a previous bond, 2015, is to allow for growth to buy in to the payment structure. And one of the reasons why we like this is, if you, if you equate this to your home, you buy a home, and you buy as much home, right? The advice my parents gave me is, when you buy a home, buy as much home as you can today, because your ability to pay that mortgage will only improve. And so year one was the hardest year for me, as I paid for my home, but year two, I got a raise, or I got a new job, year three, and so on, right? It got a little bit easier for me to pay for that. And by the time you get to year 30 and you pay off your home, you're in a very different circumstance, and, and it's not as difficult, right, to make that mortgage payment. Well, in this case, if we set a bond payment today, and it's of that way, then year one would be the hardest for the city, if you will, it'd be the most, it would be the payment that would, would be, difficult isn't the right word to use, but it would be, yeah, it'd have the most impact on you year one. As the city grows, then there are more people that participate in that project. Let me use, for example, our PI bond that we put into place in the year 2000, 2001. The payment on that was, I'm going to make up the numbers, I'm going to get kind of close, but the payment on that was about one and a half million dollars. In year one, the residents that lived here in 2001 paid that bond payment through their rates. By the time we were finished making that payment, we had reduced rates over the life of that bond, we had reduced rates so that the annual revenue that was derived from our PI rate was $2 million less than it would have been had we kept the rate the same, more than the bond payment. And that happened because of growth. Now, it doesn't mean we can make it free, it doesn't mean we can take that away, there's still a payment that has to be made. But as more residents came in, you spread that cost over more residents, that rate was able to go down, and that savings was, was felt collectively across. So around, in this, what we've talked about with you, and what, what I would recommend that we consider going forward, this, but what I would recommend going forward is a bond structure such as this, and you can see here, there's kind of a plateau, this year's one and two, and then a little bit of a step up, year three and four, five and six, and so on. After year 10, you'd want to stabilize it, because at some point, you're, you're now valuing, valuing the time value of money and, and interest costs and so on. But for that first, for those first couple of years, as you take these two steps, every, every other year, a slight increase, it allows for that new resident, as they come in, to buy into that. So today, we're, we're talking about an increase of $4.90 on the average home. Next year, because growth happens, that increase would be $4.80. But my property tax isn't going to go down. But as you built a new home and you bought into that pie, you're going to buy in at $4.80. And then the next year, you come in and it's $4.70, and so on. It gets easier and easier, but mine never went down. This allows us to set it a little bit lower today, and then you, through growth and using funds from growth, allows us to, in essence, have them buy in. And you and I, our rate won't change. And what we are proposing in not today's hearing, but in, in the package that we would present to you, we wouldn't adjust the property tax rate for this in future years, you can, you can receive that through growth. Slide kind of shows- The typical year, this is not any one year in particular, but this is a typical year, the three major funding sources being RAP tax, property tax, and sales tax. We receive about $600,000 on average every year in new sales tax revenue. Some years it's higher, because maybe there's a new store, and so you have, have a high growth year. In property taxes, based on growth, about 110, and then RAP tax, based on, on growth and such, about $210,000. So all of that adds up to about $920,000, which, in growth-
This is on top, okay.
Yeah, but important to understand that we have to use these growth numbers for inflationary costs as well, and so it's not like, oh, we have all this money that we don't know what to do with, but we use this for inflationary measures too. But there have been some questions about, are we creating a circumstance with this proposal where we have an obligation that growth won't be able to meet? And what we've suggested with this is to have a projected increase every other year of $150,000. And so this kind of gives you an idea that maybe this is the year where you have the typical growth, and you also would take 150,000 of that and put it towards a rec center bond payment. The next year, you would have the typical growth, and there wouldn't be. Remember, on this graph, you can see there is a jump this year, but not this year, there's a jump this year, but not this year. And so you have those funds that you have available, and it's, this isn't a difficult lift in terms of our budgeting priorities. If that's the priority that you set, this is something that year after year can be done, or in the case of this, maybe every other year, right? Any questions about this?
Back to the other one, just to be super clear, this is the total annual payment the city makes on a bond. This does not reflect the individual's portion of the bond payment, meaning Shane isn't paying more money in years three and four than I paid in years one and two. My payment doesn't go up.
Yeah, yeah, we would capture-
It looks like payment goes up every year, but that's, that's not the case. The individual doesn't pay more, ever.
Yeah, we, with the project, or sorry, the program that we've outlined in our discussions with you, and, and that would, we would propose for this, is you would take those from the growth-related funds, not from some additional tax increase, and so coming back and doing a hearing like this next year for the rec center or something like that.
Okay, so in a typical, this is the typical, if we didn't do it this way, potentially the first year tax increase is seven bucks.
Oh, yeah.
So it's seven bucks, and it's seven bucks forever, we've decided to take some future growth, a very small portion of our- We've decided to take some future growth, a very small portion of our future growth, and offset our initial bond payment, right?
Yeah, you would probably have a bond payment that would be $400,000 more than where I think we would set it.
That's true.
And so then, you'd need that year one, and then you'd have that forever. And you would see a...
And we wouldn't be relying on growth at that point, it would just be fixed for the life of the bond. All right.
And then...
So we're trying to lower that burden...
On day one...
Day one.
And allow a buy-in.
Okay.
Yeah. Some questions have been asked about, you're putting this as if you're, you're putting this on growth, and is it responsible or irresponsible to plan for growth? Last year, council meeting, you received a presentation, if you recall, from the Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce. You accepted the Growth and Prosperity Compact. Not that you're all for growth, but you, part of that compact, you recall, was you recognizing that growth is coming, and as we collectively plan for it, how do we? And they gave us good, best practices that we need to be participating in as we plan for growth. This shows that in 2000, our property, as according to the census of 2000, was $20,500. By 2010, we had gone up to $34,690. By 2020, just under $45,000, and a year later, $47,000. We've been adding, what our estimates are, about 2,000, maybe 2,500 people a year to our population. So is it, is it smart to plan for growth, or is it good to plan for growth? I think that's a debatable question, anybody can have an opinion on. But the, I think the fact of the matter is, growth happens. Growth has happened. And there were moments in this cycle of our cities, from 2000 to 2010, where somewhere, you know, eight, nine, we had a recession that started, and that recession continued on 10 and 11. And even though there was a recession, and we think maybe growth stopped, it didn't. In fact, during those, during those years, we still had, I think the lowest year was 75 new homes. But during a four- or five-year window of the recession years, the typical, they had about 125 to 150 new homes. And so growth does happen. That growth comes from many different places. Some of it comes from people moving into the city, and some of it comes from what I hope to be my three daughters, in the next 10 years, get married and want to stay here. And so that would be just my children staying, and I'm sure that circumstance exists for several of us. And so it comes from internal as well as, as well as external. But to say that, that we're proposing this to, and burdening the future, or planning for something that may not happen, just simply is not the reality. We plan for growth. We have to plan for growth, and growth happens. And so we've tried to be extremely conservative. And again, this kind of a graph shows the conservative nature of what we're doing. We know that there are things that we need to be prepared for, and this gives us the ability to do that, but it also gives us the ability to balance that, and also to allow for that buy-in. All right. Let me jump to some questions that we've seen and heard throughout, throughout the last couple of weeks. What are some of the things that could be included in the rec center? We had a committee that was formed, and we brought in about 15 or so residents and asked them to help. I think they had three or four meetings, they did a couple of site visits to different rec centers, and these are some of the amenities that, that they talked through, and that they suggested that would be included. And so as we've run different numbers and such, and had architects look at it, these are some of the facilities that would be included in, in a rec center. Dale always says to me, whenever I mention the word rec center, he says, Seth, just make sure that people understand that we would, we want to include a senior center component in this. And I think that's a very important reminder. Senior center with all the different amenities, and it's important to understand that the senior center today serves a really valuable population, and a great population. However, the senior center today, how it is configured, doesn't serve a growing demographic that is the, the active agers. And we've seen in the Provo rec center especially, how that combination's really served both of those. So this is, this is a list of some of the amenities that would have, and I want to highlight the first three bullet points, I've already done the first one, but indoor and outdoor pools with various apparatus, lazy river and water slides, those are amenities that we didn't have in the pool that we, that we had last year, and for many years. And then this would also have some, an indoor competition pool with the ability for some spectator seating. So that answers hopefully the question of what, what are some of the things that you're considering with this? A handful of questions about RAP tax. What is the RAP tax? How does it work? Some have felt like maybe this is a little bit of a black box, and certainly, we don't intend for that, but maybe that's an element of things that are, one, new, and, two, don't understand. So let me touch on RAP tax. RAP tax is voter-approved, it was approved in 2018. And it does have a sunset date of 2028. Every city that has a RAP tax has had that RAP tax reapproved after the sunset date. There have been some conversations on the state level, even about having that sunset provision removed, that it's just voter-installed, and then it would be there, it could be there forever. Because the, the practice and the experience across all counties and cities so far is that it has been reapproved. We have a RAP committee that meets, at least on an annual basis, they receive all the different projects that have been proposed to be funded. That city, citizen committee meets, reviews things, they make proposals, they send that to you as a council, and you, in the end, approve what would be funded by RAP funds. It has a growing revenue source. In 2019, roughly $750,000 in revenue, and 21, just under a million. And this past year, that we completed a little over $1.1 million in revenue was generated from that, 1/10 of 1 cent. One thing that is really important to understand about the RAP tax is, again, 1/10 of a percent on sales tax, or 1 penny on $10. That, we, as Spanish Fork's retail base has grown significantly in the last five or so years. The number of non-residents that are paying that RAP tax has grown as well, because more residents may be shopping here. And so this is one source of funds that allows for our portfolio, if you will, to be diversified. It's not just funds coming from you and me as residents, but also funds coming from non-residents too. The RAP tax has been used to fund arts and programming, programming, arts programming and arts purchases. It's been used in part to construct Adventure Heights Alabilities Park. Funds have also been used to replace two playgrounds, two playgrounds at various city parks, with a third programmed in this current budget. It's also been used to construct a fitness center, if you know Legacy Farms Park, you know what I'm talking about, that fitness center there. With this proposal that we've shared with you, there are still funds available for this RAP tax to be used to purchase land, to help purchase land as needed, but also to do the same things that it has already been doing. So as we've programmed out the revenue from that fund, we've made sure in our long-range plans that it has the ability to continue funding the arts, it has the ability to continue doing these playground replacements, and other things that you have already identified as a priority. And we haven't put the dollar amount that you would contribute higher than what it can sustain in doing the things that you've already set as a priority. Question we've, another question we've had is, why not just build an outdoor pool? This is a great question, something that we have wrestled with quite a bit. And as we've debated back and forth, staff, council, staff and council debated this issue back and forth and around. I've loved the discussions that we have had. To rebuild what we've had today would cost about $13 to $15 million. And some might say, well, you don't need to rebuild it, we had it. I think that's a great comment. Unfortunately, the pool that we had was about 30 years old. And so it was beginning to die, and would have required some significant enhancements in order to keep it going as it was. In fact, we had, we had just done some of those, I think it was in 2017, when the school district came to us and began adjusting their timetable. But in order to keep that facility running, it would have required some significant remodels, replacements, and/or rebuilds. And so it really wasn't a functioning pool that we could keep forever. And it had a number of other challenges, we don't need to go into those. To build something better than what we had, well, nobody wants the pool that we had, right? That was great in 1995, but in 2022, we want a wave pool, or a different amenities, we want better slides, or whatever. As we've studied those, those, the construction cost of that's about $25 to $27 million. And so as we've looked at it, and I'm summarizing some of the comments that you've given us, is, if we're going to spend that much money on just the outdoor pool, what is the cost to do the rec center too? And that's where you begin to have these discussions about, what all could we do, and would that be better? One thing that we studied was a phased approach. What if we did the outdoor pools first? And because pools are very intense in the pumps and the pipes, and the elements that takes to run a pool, if you build this outdoor pool first, you have to build all of the pumps associated with it. And then if you build something on the inside of a rec center later, you can't build those interwoven and interlaced in a way that saves you money, and you're mobilizing it a second or third time, as you maybe phase that in. And the architects, as they've reviewed that, have advised us that, that the phased approach to do just an outdoor pool today and do something later, outside of simple escalating costs, you would, you would have some loss of economies of scale, and some duplicated costs that would add up to somewhere in the $10 to $12 million range. So as we've studied this, it hasn't just been, okay, well, let's just do this. These are some of the factors about why not just build an outdoor pool today. All right. Why build the rec center now, the aquatic center now? Probably the biggest reason is, we don't have a swimming pool anymore. We knew that was coming, but we didn't, in 2015, when we were talking about this issue before, quite candidly, we talked about the swimming pool going away, but there was a sentiment expressed to us as, as we did that, knowing that we, the swimming pool would go away by 2027, there was sentiment expressed to us that you're being, you're kind of being threatening by having that be any kind of a talking point. You shouldn't use that, you can't use that, that's inappropriate for you to use that. And so that wasn't something that we talked about a lot in the 2015 discussions. But by 2017, the school district came to us and said, hey, we think that we'll rebuild the school, this pool, sorry, this school, Spanish Fork High School, by 2027. So we knew we had about a 10-year timeframe. By 2018, they came to us and said, actually, we think it'll be 2025. And then a year later, 2023, and about six months later, 2022, as their plans adjusted and changed. And so that significantly sped up our timetable. Why also build the rec center now, continues to be a community priority, as we ask on these surveys, we continue to receive this feedback. And then construction costs continue to rise, as sometimes they do. Some have asked, would Salem want to join in, or would Mappleton and other cities want to join in? I think the simple answer to this one is no. Typically, a city that wants to have, a city that pays for a facility, wants to have that facility close to their residents. And so if you were to have a conversation with the mayor of Salem, he would say, no thank you, build it, we'll come and use it. And I think that's an appropriate answer for that city to have. Certainly, they are welcome to use it, and I think at a future date, as we consider, if we build this, and we, as we consider structures of fees, et cetera, I would imagine you will at least talk about some kind of a non-resident rate. Whether you do that or not is up to you, but they can use that, pay that, and then those funds would be used for the operations. Will the rec center pay for itself? If not, why would we build one? I think this is a great question, and to be quite frank, we don't know, at this moment, if it will pay for itself. We don't have all those details penciled out, we don't have the budget for it. I have certainly a number of good ideas on the operational costs, the numbers of employees, and things like that. As we do those studies, we can see that this is a rate structure that we would need to have. And it's not a rate structure that would be difficult for the residents to pay for. And so we don't know that it, we don't know that it will or it won't pay for itself. However, we will design, and you have certainly the purse strings for this, we'll design the model, and model the operations for it to at least break even, if not make more than, than its costs. We get asked all the time about this kind of a question, and as a government entity, we don't want to actually make a lot of money. Because if we make a lot of money, then we're telling the resident, you need to pay more than you need to. And so there is a balancing act. But that it at least break even and cover its costs is certainly a goal that we have and will have, and I have no, I have no concerns about being able to hit that. Provo continues to operate their facility in the positive, and we have, in the past, spent $150,000 each year operating the swimming pool that we have. That number goes up and down, some years higher, some years lower. We have spent about $225,000 to operate our current senior center. Those are, those numbers are above, above the revenue, sorry, expenses above revenue. And so the cost to the residents for the swimming pool above revenue was about $150,000 a year. And the cost to the residents for the senior center was about, is about $225,000. And so if you have the, those funds, you can divert those funds towards the operations as well. I don't, I hope, and as, again, we budget and plan for this, we'll shoot for and operate such that it will be a break-even venture, if not, be able to fund some of its future renovations or future capital projects as well. Let the private sector build this, not government. And a similar question, will this put any private businesses out? Our conversations on this topic have, with local businesses, local gyms, and some of you have had these conversations, some of our staff members have had these conversations, those businesses have said, no, this is not going to cause me to have a problem. In fact, this is going to help my business, because I have a hard time with the, all of the residents that are here, I can't do the things that make me more money. And so this will allow a lot of my residents, or a lot of my customers, to go and recreate and do the things in your facility that your facility has, and I can focus on the things that generate more revenue for me. That probably isn't always the case for every business, but at least some of the interim, or some of the initial conversations that we have had with local businesses have given us that, that flavor. We've also, we also heard this in a significant way in 2015, and it's 2022, and nothing has materialized. And I think that's an important, at least discussion to have. If somebody says, well, the private sector will, there's somebody talking about doing it. There are significant challenges to this, and, for the private sector to do it. And they didn't. And in some forums and some settings, that was even promised, right? Not by us, and not by probably anybody here, but by people in the discussions, and that didn't materialize. And so if, if this is something that you want as a, as a community, then saying the private sector will come, that hasn't happened yet. Why isn't this on the ballot? Another good question that, that people have asked. This was a ballot question in 2015. That was about a funding source. And this is a, this is a question and a misunderstanding that we receive a lot. When we put items on the ballot for, for the residents to vote on, a lot of times, and I, when I say a lot, I'm thinking of maybe two specific instances, one around 2000, when we asked about building the sports park. And then the second one, of course, in 2015, when we talked about that life center. The question wasn't, should we or should we not build the sports park, or should we or should we not build the rec center? That wasn't the question. The question was, should we, should we use and leverage your property taxes at this rate to do that project? And as I read different comments in different forums, that is probably the number one thing I, I hear people say about, why isn't this on the ballot? And, and my answer to that question is really simple, and whether it's appreciated or liked or not, right, you can certainly debate. But the question wasn't, should we or should we not build this? Should we or should we not build the park, or the life center? It was, use your property tax as the guarantee in this amount for that bond. This wouldn't, and we aren't doing that today, we are not using property tax as the guarantee. We haven't developed the bond yet, but it will either be a sales tax-backed bond, or it will be what we call a local building authority bond, which actually works just like a mortgage. The structure itself is the leverage for the bond. I love that model, because that's what we all know in terms of our house. And will we default on the loan? No. But if we were to do that, the creditor isn't going to reach in and take property tax, they would take the facility. And, and that's a significant difference between what is being talked about today and back in 2015. I think those are all the general questions that I got, or at least I've been able to glean from social media. Any other questions from you as a mayor and council that I can address?
Questions right now for Seth, or maybe after hearing from the public?
Yeah. Yeah, I feel like I want to say, just, so not a comment about what Seth... I feel like I want to say, just, so not a comment about what Seth just did. But we oftentimes get a question or a concern about, is this staff-driven? Is this Dell-driven? Seth-driven? Let's be very, very clear, this is us. This is city council, mayor-driven. We've asked Seth Dell to provide the data he just presented, to be open and transparent about giving us that data so that we can make an informed decision to our consent. It's easy to say Dell wants a legacy. This is not a Dell legacy. This is Dell. Go figure out what this would look like. Go tell us how much it might cost. Go tell us if it's, can pay for itself. How we possibly fund this? That's what we've asked Seth to do. That's what he told us today on those topics. But it is not driven by staff at all. That is 100% our call. The decision tonight is 100% our call. They don't get to weigh in. They get to provide the facts, and they have. And I appreciate you guys taking the time doing that. The citizens that we brought together to give us an idea of what should go in it. We didn't ask them, should we fund this? We didn't ask them how we should fund this. We didn't ask them, would you be okay with a property tax increase? We asked them, given the fact that we want to do this, what should it look like? So I think, I just want to be very, very clear before the public comes up and starts, we have that conversation. We asked the staff, staff provide us. They're only giving us the facts. They're only giving us the data so that we can make the decision. But the decision lies with six of us.
Well, five of us.
Five of us, the mayor gets to referee.
He doesn't even get a vote.
But I have to keep you guys in line all the time and forget your names and everything. On this side, it's hard. This side's easy. This side's hard. Hey, thanks again, everybody, for coming.
Chad has a call.
Oh, yes. Councilman Argyle.
So I just want to make one comment before we go into this public hearing. I want to say thanks, first of all, to those that are here. Those emails that we received, the phone calls that we received, and the conversations that I've had with resident and business owners have had some awesome conversations. Thanks to Mayor. He responded to, I think, most of the emails that we received back. And even when we had other questions, he responded very quickly. And I hope you got your answers that you needed at the time. One thing that was open to me, a good friend that expressed something to me, he told me outright that he's not really for this. But he says, I'm going to use that rec center. We're the kind of people that go and will use that rec center fully. But his concern was, over the past, since 2016 to 2022, his property taxes had doubled. And I hadn't heard that. Three people indicated that to me in some conversations. So I had to go back to my own records. And I have records back since the first home I bought, 1978, and just kind of went back through, but especially 2016. And the one thing he just said is, please understand that the little part that maybe Spanish Fork is doing, and Seth brings this up all the time, that this is about Spanish Fork's section. But he was talking about the whole thing. Please remember, and I'm saying this to the council too, that the property tax that we have got in the last year has increased double over the last six years. Please keep that in mind as we continue to do more tax, property tax increases. And when I looked at my property taxes, my previous home had, went from 1,700, this year the tax on it's 34. The city's part of that was 194. This year it'll be 384, has doubled. So we are aware of that. And I want you to be aware of that, the council, that as a property tax increases, it has a huge effect, especially on, and this happens to be somebody who's on a fixed income. Has a huge impact on them. Because they don't have the ability, especially if you're in your elderly, and you don't have the ability to go to work and raise more money and cover that, even this little bit of a money. Just want you guys to be mindful of that, some of the conversation I had with a business and residential. But I'm grateful for the emails. I'm grateful for what's going to take place tonight. I guarantee you, we're all listening and making notes. We made a decision to build the rec center, as Shane just indicated, and asked the staff to provide us with the information so that we had that information in order to go forward with what possibly would be something that we would do for the Spanish Fork City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Okay, we'll get into a public hearing. Again, you'll see the timer that, you got that? You see the timer that is up there? And we'll try to remind you of it to wrap it up when you hit about three minutes, too. And we'll take notes, staff's taking notes, too. Any questions you might have, we'll try to answer after the public hearing is closed, too. What else was I going to say? Oh, for Tara's sake, when you come up, just state, just let her know your name so she can get it in the public record. And then you can be off and running.
I move that we go into public hearing?
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go into public hearing. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon? Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Okay, we're in public hearing. Anybody like to come up? Yes, please.
I'm here to represent the older section of Spanish Fork, and I'm Margaret Creer. I've lived here my whole life. We've lived in our house. It was built in 81, up on the east bench. We have lived in and gone to five steaks and 15 wards, never moved. We are for, yeah, a lot. I know I've lost count. I can't remember what ward I'm in. So you're talking about $58.80 per year increase in taxes per our house, which was about right up there. I pay $190 a year for a non-resident, single individual to go over to Springville to their Clyde Recreation Center. It's a gain for me, even if I have to pay a resident fee to a rec center. We're all for an outdoor pool. I don't know if any of you came down. I know Stacy came down to our ladies' recreation aerobic class. There was probably 40. Kevin came, too. I think I wasn't there the day Kevin came. 50 women. But I did a piece on Facebook. We had over 400, 500 comments on, build a swimming pool. I don't know if anybody's really against a rec center, but everybody wants an outdoor pool, indoor pool, whatever. Let's get it going. And, you know, the difference of the $58.80, I'll stay home from Target one week, and that'll pay for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. Let's just write that down, Bob. Yes, please. Sure. You got to state both your names, though.
We're representing the pool.
So I am Suzanne Martinez. And I have emailed all of you many times. You're probably so sick of hearing from me. Come up here.
Oh, yes, I'm Frances Stikes. And we benefit from the pool. I'm just going to say myself, I suffer from knee pain. And I have injections in my knee. And found that water aerobics has benefited. And I go twice a year to get an injection, which my doctor says is pretty good. But, I mean, compared to, I've tried all kinds of exercising. I've gone to Vasa and I walk. But the water aerobics is the one that's the best for me. And we were paying $2 a day at the other pool. And so that's about $120 for three months, if I calculate that right, that we were paying for the summer just to do our water aerobics. So the $48 or $50 to me is a no-brainer.
I grew up in Spanish Fork. I was a four-sling, went to Spanish Fork High School, went to college, moved away, lived away for many, many years. And the last place that I lived was in Highlands Ranch, Colorado, which I sent Stacy an email about this a year or so ago. We had three rec centers in our city. It started off with one rec center, according to how many people lived in our town. And then as our town grew, we got two more rec centers. And they were specifically placed in the center of the town and then on either end. And they were fantastic. We paid a little tiny fee every month that just came out of our paycheck. And they had so many different things to offer. And then when I moved here and started doing water aerobics, I live right behind the Spanish Fork High School. The soccer field used to be in my backyard. And now it's the new high school parking lot. And so I used to be able to sleepwalk over to water aerobics in one minute's time. But it has been so beneficial. And we have so many ladies. Every once in a while, we have a man that comes, which is awesome. I think they feel intimidated by all the ladies. But it's so beneficial for so many age levels. I'm a school teacher. I teach during the school year. And I'm up early because I'm used to getting up early. And it is so great for our help, mental help, physical help. It just really gives us so many things that we need as citizens of Spanish Fork. And as a granny, it has been the pits this summer, I just got to say, to not be able to go to our own town pool with my grandchildren every single day of the week. We swim six days a week. And so I also belong to the Clyde Rec Center $190, you know, a year club so that I can continue to swim. So we are so excited about the rec center. We'll do anything we can. I was thinking the same thing as Margaret. One half hour at Target is $58.80. Or two people eating at our brand-new Texas Roadhouse.
There you go.
So when you're marketing this, remind the citizens, they spend that money all the time.
And I just have to say, I don't know about you, but we've been doing water aerobics for about 15 years? Yeah, 15 years. So this year, we've had to find another source. And I don't want to spend my money in Payson at their facility. I don't want to go to Springville. I would rather invest here in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Okay, anyone else?
Well, we're done.
Nope.
Just kidding, just kidding.
I'll crank through it. I have a lot of comments here. So in the announcement video of the proposed rec center on March 10th this year, Mike said that he and the city council had decided to move forward on planning and building the rec center because it is, quote, "the future we have chosen after hearing your feedback." So I decided to look into the feedback the citizens have provided in this regard with, from city surveys conducted over the last two years. Within the 2021 report, contrary to the Parks and Recs-only survey, only 42 people mentioned support for rec center in the open-ended response, which comes out to roughly 3% of survey respondents. A new pool was also ranked as the least important issue facing the city. In fact, the ranking of its importance for a pool compared to the 2020 responses is down, not up. The most important ranked issues were dealing with the excessive traffic and excessive growth in the city, with over 96% of respondents indicating as such. Now, the reason that Mike and the city council have told us that we should be in favor of such growth is because it will minimize our collective tax burden, thus negating the necessity for increased taxes for various forms of city spending. But now we are forced to deal with both. In regards to the rejection of the 2015 bond proposal for rec center, Mike stated that people rejected it simply because it was the wrong time and the wrong way to pay for it. And now he is right that we did not want to be paying for it with a tax increase. But the city council is now acting as though they know the interests of the citizens better than the citizens themselves and are ignoring the pleas not to increase taxes. And please keep in mind that the city council being held two weeks ago, Seth Perrins mentioned that this tax increase may simply be used to justify inflation and infrastructure, and that a potential bond may still be required in addition to the tax increase in order to afford the rec center a year or two down the line. With all that said, the city doesn't even need to be involved to provide a rec center anyway. In November of last year, a group of private contractors announced their desire to build a 100,000-square-foot rec center near the Spanish Fork Benjamin exit to serve the citizens of Spanish Fork and the surrounding areas, which would cost the citizens of Spanish Fork nothing to build. So why has the city not been in contact with these contractors to offer tax benefits and other enticements to ensure the services can be provided to Spanish Fork without the need to increase taxes? I feel the reason the city has decided not to propose the bond as they did in 2015 and has instead elected to implement a tax increase is threefold. One, they eliminate the need to provide legal bond requirements, such as impact analysis and operational analysis to tie specific benefits to the increased cost of citizens. Two, they eliminate the need for a majority citizen vote to approve such a project. And three, they eliminate the expiration of the increased cost once the project is paid for, so they can maintain the increased tax revenue indefinitely. It is clear that the city council does not understand the wants and needs of the citizens. Approval of the mayor and city council is down compared to 2020 responses. If any of the information that I've provided, it's the first time you guys have heard it. It's publicly available. I would hope that this is something you guys have researched. Lastly, I personally think the city needs to recognize that the problem isn't that we don't have enough money for the projects that we want to spend, but simply that we want to spend too much. My name is Derek Gess. Listen, if you didn't get that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Jake Mayer. So I planned on coming in guns-blaring, figuratively speaking. But my wife sat me down a couple of days ago and said I'm too contentious. And she said, I will have to see all of these guys at the gas station tomorrow. So don't embarrass me. So my concern is, is there's no listening to the citizens. I think that we've had, we've been shown these, 1,400 people voted on this or provided feedback. But I think it needs to be on the elections. I think we need to vote on it. There's a lot of citizens out there that don't want this. And there's a few things here I want to read. This was back in August of 2020. So this was just two years ago. Councilwoman Beck, she said that they don't have plans to raise taxes in the future, but it will ultimately be, will ultimately depend on what the citizens want the city to provide. So there are citizens that want this, and there are citizens that don't. Councilmember Gordon, I love you, Brandon, reiterated that the council has no plans to build a new pool or rec center with associated tax hike. So there's things that were said here today that I just don't have faith in. I don't, when these things were said two years ago, and now we're building a rec center, I don't have faith in that. Kevin, you said that we provided 1,600 bags to kids down at the rodeo center. My in-laws, they give their time over at Tabitha's Way. And today, they provided meals for 60 families. And tonight, they provided 60 more family meals. There's people in this city that can't afford this. And I know $5 seems like a very small amount. But there's $5 here. My property taxes went up $500 this year. Gas is now $5 a gallon. This is not the right time. So I ask that you will take that into consideration. Take the other citizens that can't afford this into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, Jake.
She's coming, unless you can beat her. Okay.
Hi, my name's Lori Stewart. I wasn't actually planning on getting up. I just wanted to kind of hear. But I figure I might as well get my vote in, too, of, I am not for the rec center. I do not want my taxes increased. I feel that I agree with what the gentleman had just said. Let us vote. You guys, I feel like coming in here, even listening to the one earlier, it was, we already bought this property, just accept this. And everyone said yes. I'm kind of like, still learning about the process of how the city council works, and that was kind of shocking. And so I feel like the council has made this decision, and it's a go. And I, for one, just do not want it. I would rather vote because I feel like you have to go door-to-door to make sure it is. And it feels like the louder people are being heard. And I would just like to have this on a vote and not have the rec center.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Paul Dayton. So some of the comments about putting this to a vote. And back in 2015, I remember when we had this as a vote. And I voted in support of that because I think that's something we need in our community. But let's talk about what's going on right now. Councilwoman Marshall, you said, this is your decision as a council. We all get to vote for you in our elections. In fact, in the last election we had last time, I talked to every candidate who was running. And everyone was very gracious to spend that time talking with me. And I very much appreciate that. And I think you, as a council, need to take the responsibility and make these decisions. And sometimes if there is a political cost to those decisions, that's worth doing. I mean, if you, if we don't want you to do what you're doing, we check in with you every time when we have those elections. And that's ultimately our responsibility as people. If we don't like what you're doing, we can vote you out. I do like what you're doing here. And I like that, that nothing necessarily is set in stone. Things change as the city comes and grows. We've seen that change. Change is always going to happen. We can't assume that anything that's set up at one time is going to be the same. And I guess I'll take one more comment here is, time is something that we can't buy anymore of. We can't purchase any more time. Time is something that will be gone at some point. For our children in this community, many of them who need community... For our children in this community, many of them who need community, this is something that can help them. And, and as I've heard some of the comments here today, it's not just the children. There's lots of people who are just yearning for community. I've gone to the rec center so many times. I love being active. That's what we need more of. With all of this technology and social media and phones and everything like that we, we have right now, we have a lack of ability to actually go out and do real things. Now, there's plenty of community opportunity we have here, and I think our city has done a very good job of building community, and I see this as fundamentally building that community. And I'd love to, to see, to see what you can do here. So I strongly support this. I know that cost is different for, for different people. For me, at my stage in life, the cost is, is trivial. I know those on a fixed income, that makes a difference. I've, I've known people on a fixed income where that makes a difference. So that, you know, it's not trivial to everybody. It's trivial to me, but I understand it's not trivial to anyone. So I, I guess I'll just say one final thing. Thanks for the good work you're doing for the city. I love living in the city. I think this makes it so I would want to continue living in the city longer. And anything you can do to, to capture more money that would be going to Provo or Springville is good for me. So, thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Yes. Yes, you heard them. Yep. Oh, you're all right.
Hi, I'm Annette Morrison. I'm actually a longtime resident of Spanish Fork. I was a sheen. But I, I have to admit, I'm not a homeowner. I have been, but I'm not at this time. And I would gladly pay the $58 to help those that are on fixed income that, you know, with taxes, if that's possible. But not only for our water aerobics that I have been a participant of also. I've had my knees replaced, and going back into the water just after I did it has helped the mobility. So the benefits of recovery, water recovery is great. I know the doctor that I went to, that's the first thing he told me to do is get in the water to move. So it's a beneficial for older people. Also, I'm also concerned about our youth. The swim teams and swimming lessons and all that, right now, they have to go either to Springville or, or Provo or, or wherever for those. And, you know, that's an extra added expense to those families. And I know that while we were doing water aerobics these past few summers, there was quite a few youth there also in the swim team. So that's my concern is, yes, I'm for the rec center too, because I, I think it would be beneficial, but as in all things, not all people's going to go for it, and not all people are going to benefit. But I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
She, hey, she was up first. Are you sure? Come on, yeah, come on now, come on now. He'll let you up. He'll let you up. Sorry. All right, he's next. Pierre's next. Okay, come on.
Hi, my name is Anna Keel. I just wanted to say, well, I guess my question for staff would be, how come it wasn't proposed this way back in 2015 instead of a bond, if there was another way to do it? But I guess, um, one thing I did want to say is, both my husband and I graduated here from Spanish Fork High School, raising our family here in Spanish Fork. We had a huge graduating class, and a lot of us are still here. We're all raising our family here in Spanish Fork, so we're all kind of same age, have the same age children, and we, I think it's important to realize that it's not just the tax increase, those $58 a year, it's not that big of a deal. Obviously, it is for some people that it really shouldn't say that, but it's also what the cost of the rec center membership will be. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, and I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of things in place. Now, I do that back in 2015, the proposed membership for the rec center was quite steep. If I remember correctly, it was somewhere, it was somewhere in the $700 a year for a family of four. So, yeah, that's my only concern, is my children would absolutely love it. We are all for the rec center. We just want to be able to afford it, one, with the property taxes that we're paying with it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Pierre, your turn.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dale. Pierre Guzman. I've been at Spanish Fork for 20 years now. I am probably with a minority because my daughters are competitive swimmers. My daughters swim at the state level. My youngest daughter, right now, she's ranked in the top 20 breast strikers in the state for her age group. So I have a small thorn in my side, and I also want to make it known to everybody here and anybody on YouTube, that I was a member of the focus group that the city called together. Came together for several sessions. We went, we visited different rec centers and brought ideas to the group. What would benefit the city? To answer something that Seth mentioned, was what we had before was a 50-meter pool by 24 yard, 25 yard. What the city is looking at and considering is eliminating the 50-meter pool. So for those of you that do, you know, water aerobics and such, the pool will be smaller is what they're looking for inside. I, for one, feel we should double think that, right? And put some consideration into what's going to come in the future. I know that right now, everyone's talking about, well, what's the tax increase? The tax increase. And, I mean, right now, myself and my wife, we're driving to either Orem Rec, or Provo Rec, or BYU for my daughters to swim on a daily basis. So to be honest with you, the $56 in tax, I'm, I'm spending that in gas in a week right now. Okay? So for me, it's not that big of a deal. As well as, just to make you aware, I am also paying upwards of $300 a year for my family to be members of Provo Rec, to have those full amenities, because we don't have them here in town. So will I support the rec center? I will blanket across, just say, yes, I will support the rec center. But do I feel that as a member of the committee, we were fully listened to? I can't agree with that. In speaking to other committee members, I don't feel that what is going to go into the rec center was really thought of in detail. If, you've all seen the plan that was laid out in front of us, it's a mini Provo Rec, right? I brought up the point in the meeting saying, let's build something for Spanish Fork. The six of you pride yourselves in representing Spanish Fork. The six of you feel that this is going to help our community. Let's make it ours. Now, one of the points that Dale brought up is, well, why reinvent the wheel? Provo's is profitable. We can make ours profitable. It kind of works the same way. I agree, but I disagree. I want it to be ours. I want us as citizens to be proud of what we have, and I want to help the city grow. So I'm for the rec center. I appreciate the input. I appreciate you letting me be a part of that focus group, but I hope that we can give more input still. Right? So it's not set in stone today what's going to happen. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. Yes, please.
My name is Brittany Drought, and I initially came because I was a little upset at how unlucky I was at the property, I got a huge property tax increase of 16% before what you guys were asking. And the only reason I would be okay with that is if you were going to be putting that extra money towards a rec center, because I do have, I have five children, and I want facilities that we can go to and attend, and I have hopefully future swimmers. So I would really love a, a pool in the area. And I also hope that in the future, we will not continue to raise property taxes as much. This, this year, our property taxes will increase 42% overall, and that's a lot. And so I hope that this is a one-time deal. We'll get our rec center built and continue to grow, but not, not that much every year. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you for coming.
Sorry, I'm short.
You're all right.
My name is Linda Bartholomew, and I live right across from the Adventure Heights Park, which I love. I'm kind of of mixed emotions on this, because I am living on fixed income. When my husband died, he hadn't signed, he hadn't officially retired, so I only get half of his retirement. Otherwise, I would have got it all, plus social security. So my budget's really, really tight. And it's tough. When I saw those hikes, I went, I don't know how I'm going to do this. But I do think it's, I think it would be great to have for the city. This, if it were, if this were the only increase, I would be great with it. But me and all the school districts kicking those taxes up so high, that that's going to kill me. And I plan to go to their meeting too, to see what's going on. But it just seems like we're hitting, being hit so much with taxes, with inflation, possible recession, and it makes it hard on those of us that don't have, we don't get a raise with our retirement. They don't care. So I think we do need a swimming pool here and a recreation center, but I'm just really concerned about those of us that are going to have to have a hard time paying the increase in our property tax.
Thank you, Linda. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Linda.
Mayor and council members, my name is Doug Ford. You know, I'm a resident and a business owner, and I'm one of the members of the parks, the city Parks and Recreation Committee. And we, as a committee, we spent a lot of time reviewing this early on, and it, it for sure, the consensus of the committee was to recommend moving forward with this to the city council. From me personally, because I am a business owner and own a property to run my business, this is going to, this tax increase will be significant for me. But I still think it's a good idea, and I, I probably won't use the facility much at all. But for the community, I think it's a, you know, a great idea, and I'm willing to pay to support the project. So, and just before I sit down, as I was looking here, and I said I, I wouldn't use this facility very much, I saw the mayor and a couple of other council members, you know, looking me up and down and saying, well, Doug, maybe, maybe you ought to consider using it a little more, and your pants might fit you a little bit better. So I, I could, I can read.
You read, you read a lot into that look. Wow. Thanks, Doug.
We just want to keep you around for years and years and years, Doug.
My name's Tia Fowles. I first want to express my appreciation to those of you that emailed me back. I sent the, the council a few emails, and I appreciate the responses that I got. And I appreciate that you addressed so many of my concerns in your response today. The one that I felt was still not really addressed was the aspect of recession. If we go into a recession, and all of these streams of revenue are relying on growth and development and increases in sales tax and people frequencing the shops in our city, all of those things would go down. And my concern is that then the only place you have to turn for the revenue, revenue that you would need to pay that bond is the taxpayers. And increasing the property taxes again to then meet those deficits that are not coming from the five streams of revenue that you have planned for the rec center. I'm actually not opposed to having a swimming, a swimming pool. I, I don't personally support the idea of a full rec center, but I appreciate that you guys have been creative in your, your approach. And with that said, I also feel like a lot of the citizens feel like they don't have a say in this. And they feel like this is being done, like in 2015, I understand that the vote was done to, for the bond payment, but I feel like a lot of people were using that as a voice to say, this is something we don't want to support at all. And I realize that the demographics have changed quite a bit in the last seven years. And so if I'm in the minority of not wanting a rec center, I'm okay with that, but I would like to have it go to a vote. I would still like to, I feel like a lot of people would feel more satisfaction knowing that they had a voice and that they had a say in it, rather than just the five of you voting on it and representing us. So those are my concerns.
My name is Diana Moon. I have questions. I don't think this is a discussion forum, so I may be wrong. This is my first time, so whatever. My understanding is, as the city council made a decision to build a rec center in 2015, and that was just a blanket decision, so I'd like to know why. If we, we had a pool before, so why can't we use that, why can't we use the impact tax to help pay for this? My next question is, where's the rap tax coming from? I understand that a percentage of the tax increase for our property tax will go to the rec center, but not all of it. And that there will be additional funds, and this is not a bond or something that we're voting on, but to pay for this, we are, we will be assessed again. So those are my questions. I hope they will be answered in some format. I would prefer that it went to a vote. I am not in favor of the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. We've got those questions down. We'll, I think we got them. Yes, yes. And then we'll go back there.
Stephen Moon. I do want to be on record as being opposed to this, and particularly opposed to the tax increase. There's always an excuse, and it amazes me, and the city council, I'm sure is aware of this, citizens seem to vote to increase taxes over and over and over again, and I don't understand it. I've also been in communities and seen things voted down, and I've seen the, the council maneuver and try and get it in a different way, and get it a different way, and do everything they can to ignore the vote of the citizens and get their way and get what they want. And one of the things that I saw that on was an expensive new city building in a town that the people kept voting down. They eventually build it. In the meantime, they'd spent millions upon millions of dollars redesigning and redesigning, hoping the citizens would do it. I hope we don't do that. As, as this was being presented, I got the impression that this is a very elaborate center, state of the art, that we're putting everything in that we can imagine. I've heard comments to the contrary, but I also know, from working in construction and being in cities, working in their offices as buildings were, rec centers were completed, I think it's a competition out there. Who is going to be the next city? And is it going to be better than the one that just got completed? And so let's not be a competition. I, I, as much as I oppose this, I think it's going to go forward. So if it's going forward, let's please try and keep costs under control. $60 million is a big building. That's a lot of money. And the maintenance continues forever. You know, 10 years down the road, you're replacing things, you're doing repairs. You got staff to pay. There's going to be tax dollars invested in this besides the initial, the original billing cost. And those need to be considered. People say $58 a month, but that's not the only tax dollar going into this. There's additional tax dollars that are hidden over time. You know, we already said, you were supporting the old pool. You're going to be supporting the new pool. In low likelihood, it's possible that they could be, you could charge enough that you're making money. I vote for that, you know? If you're going to make money, or at least break even, that's great. But historically... But historically, these types of things cost a lot of money, so.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen.
Yes.
Robert Cotum. I'm right brother argy over here. I'm living on a fixed income. My property tax over the last five years has gone up $700. This last year with the new tax just got was almost $300 this year. I'm in favor of a rec center as long as it's built to accommodate what's coming up, but yet to look at what we already have in this city. You've got the adventure park up there, it's already got outdoor water features. You've got a splash pad already in this town, down. So do we need another splash pad? Do we need some of these water features that you want to put into a rec center? And I'm part of the senior citizens. We need a good senior citizen center that will accommodate the use that we need down there. And so, yes, I've got mixed feelings on it. A rec center, yes, it will be good, but the taxes that we're paying keeps going up, not just for you, but with the school district. My bill for the school district taxes went up $150 more for, for them, plus the other one that's going up, the water district. So that's why you've got, watch what we're doing taxation-wise. Everybody of these different taxation entities seems like they can raise their taxes every time. So we need to watch what we're doing, I think, and look at what we, we want in this rec center. But do we already have something already on the town that's already being used? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotum.
Thank you, Rob.
Anyone else? Sure.
Mayor, council, good evening. I think I'm on record of my strongs.
Mine Tara.
Oh, Andrew Kelly is my name.
Andrew Kelly.
I think I'm on record of my strong support of this body. Kevin, I have admired you in the, in the planning commission, your thoughtfulness and your concern for our community, so I appreciate you being in this body. Same with your talents too, Shane. I noticed recently you had a visit from some people from one of my favorite cities on earth. That is one of the most vibrant, lively cities there is, that I love to visit. So if my almost $600 increase this year was going to make us one-tenth of the city of Madrid, I wouldn't be here. I'm all, as you know, I'm all for progress. I'm for the center. But I want to read a couple of values here of some properties in the, in the city. Property value, $3,207,800. 2021 taxes paid, not city, the entire taxes paid, $115.93. 5.23 acres, value zero. 2021 taxes paid, zero. Property value, $1,826,000. 2021 taxes paid, $57.58. Now, Seth's probably going to get up here, and he knows that I support him and think he's an amazing manager. But I do find it a little condescending when you kind of tell us that we can't read a tax bill, that we can't read what our city portion is, and what the county and whatnot. And I'm not, and you know exactly what these properties are when I say those values. And I'm not here to grind an axe, apart from Stacy, who's probably has royal lineage. The rest of us, I'm sure, are from agrarian ancestors. So I am not against, and certainly not against my faith in what they do for the community. My point is simply, the fact is, property taxes are not a community tax. They're extremely lopsided. The gentleman before that has a business, I feel for him. I have exemptions that he doesn't have. But you're my body to keep that in check. I'm spoiled, as Chad knows. I, I walk every day with my wife on amazing trails to two parks in my neighborhood. I don't leave my neighborhood. As I've said to Seth, I wish I could walk on that trail to a store and hope one day at the front of my neighborhood, you'll put an Australian bakery, and maybe, maybe a barn, so I can just walk there and get some good food. But property taxes, I find are the most burdensome tax that we all deal with. They are not a sales tax. That's a horrible comparison, horrible comparison. I can cut my spending and cut my sales taxes. I can't do that with property taxes. I can't take off a section of my house and say, I don't want to pay that anymore. So I'm 100% supportive of this. I support a new sales tax, an IT tax, an infrastructure tax. Or make the RAP plus tax, which it is now, double it. Because the property tax is not a fair tax. It's not, you know, something that, I, I find it egregious. It's the largest check that I write out every year, and I don't enjoy it. But I'm happy to pay sales taxes and taxes that are actually even for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
Good evening. Alan Westman. I've been a resident of Spanish Fork for 17 years now. Love it here, and I feel like the city's really well-run. Thank you to current and past city council members and city staff. I am in favor of this, this proposal generally. I am in favor of a new rec center. Looking forward to having racquetball courts that are publicly available, as well as the pool and other facilities. I do have some concerns and questions. Property tax is basically made on unrealized gains, and it, it tends to be regressive and affecting people who are on fixed incomes. And, and I really feel for, for people who are feeling the pinch. So I do appreciate that this proposal still involves a decrease in our tax rate, even though it isn't an increase in the actual amount that we would expect to, to spend. But I appreciate that it is still including a decrease of the tax rate. One of my questions that I hope gets addressed is, is there any way to, to waive or, or help people who are on a fixed income, who are in a lower income bracket, to somehow give them a way to kind of escape the pinch? Another question is with the RAP tax, because that is a component of the funding. If it is, if it is set to expire in 2028, what happens if voters choose not to renew that? It sounded from Seth's presentation that that's not likely to happen, but considered as a possibility, so a concern of mine. Another question is, we are in a drought. Pools obviously involve some water usage, some loss of water and so forth, and the cost of water, we don't know what will happen at the state level, but if, if the cost of water changes, how will that affect the financing of this project? Finally, mentioned about the, just the overall effect of people's property taxes. I know that schools are funded both from the district assessed property taxes, as well as taxes, income taxes that go to the state, go towards funding of our, of our schools. And I don't know how that balances out, but one of my thoughts is that because the state is running a surplus, we can advocate to our state legislators to please send more money to the schools and maybe offset some of that property tax burden that we have, if it works that way. So generally, in favor and supportive, but I do appreciate the concerns that other citizens have expressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Hi, my name is Matt Hargraves, and so I just wanted to come in and put, speak in favor of this rec center. I appreciate the work that's been done here and through others. I appreciate that it's an investment in our community and in our future for both children, as well as those seniors living amongst us now that can have some facilities that more adequately represent some of their needs. And so I appreciate what you're all doing here, kind of facing, you know, those of us in our communities. I would not, that's how representative democracy works. We're not a direct democracy. And so I appreciate, this is kind of what we sign up for, and if we don't like it, it's up for us to change the people sitting in front of us here. So I appreciate what you're doing, and again, look forward to seeing this go forward. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt. Who's running the camera?
My name's Travis Born. I've been grateful to work for the city for eight years, full-time for five. We've just recently built, or not built a home, we bought a home in Spanish Fork. And I can tell you that working for the city while living outside of city boundaries is much different than living in the city and working for the city. I just feel closer to the people that I'm with, and I'm grateful that I'm able to work with people in the senior center who, I know it's a, it's a cliche, it's kind of funny, but the seniors in our city do not just sit crouched over bingo cards and, and, you know, wasting away their life. They're at the pickleball courts. They're jogging on the trails, they're doing things. I, I think this is similar to the, all of the, the Adventure Heights Park. When we talk about a rec center, I have filmed at other rec centers, and we've been talking about QPR trainings to prevent suicides. People have had other medical classes that I've been able to film, and that happened at a rec center. I've heard of people going to Springville who, kind of like me, single parent family, kids have nowhere to go, they go to the rec center, and they stay out of trouble. I think that the, the lives of people will change with a rec center. And again, I like what the other gentleman, I forget his name, Pepe or Pierre or, big gentleman, I'm just going to call him big gentleman. I liked what he said where, if we can figure out what goes into the rec center, I know it will benefit the lives, the all adventures, the park. Sorry, I know a family whose special needs child had not spoken to anyone for three years. They went to that park, and the parents just broke down because they see their kid playing and talking with kids. So I know the rec center isn't just going to be swimming. It's not just going to be, oh, let my kids run around. There's going to be people there who need it to maybe not take their life, maybe to stay out of trouble, maybe to live a little longer for their family members. And so I'm, I'm grateful for everyone who has brought up the issues of financing. I know it's not easy, but in my opinion, is it going to get any better? Is inflation ever going to end? My property tax, will it ever go down? And I just feel that if I can make someone's life that much better for $50, $60, I'm willing to pay that tenfold and think outside of myself. But I am so very grateful for everyone's input, and I know that the city wants it, the people who aren't here have their opinions, and I'm grateful that you'll be open to their voices. So, thank you. Thanks, Travis.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Emily Peterson, and I'll apologize right now because I, I'm terrified of public speaking and have a lot of anxiety around it. And so, more than likely, I'll ramble, and it might not make sense, but hopefully we can get through this.
You're doing fine so far. You got it.
Yeah, it's, the anxiety especially goes up when I feel like you're not going to listen to me anyways, so. We've had this discussion for over seven years, talking to many of you. And I know many of you like ran on the fact that you wanted a rec center, but I don't think that gave you a mandate to get a rec center. And we're just being told we're getting one, even though citizens voted overwhelmingly against one. And, well, a life center with a senior center, library, and the swimming pool. And conveniently, we're now getting a library, which I believe was originally built as the library, but now more and more city offices seem to be moving in, so. So having projects or build is one thing, and change to another thing is frustrating. So over the past seven years, as we've had this, this discussion, and I've seen the surveys go out, and I always answer them, you can see what, what answer you're going for. And, and often many, I don't know, multiple choice or answers weren't given so that you wouldn't get the answer you didn't want. Of course, if you're running a survey about rec centers, of course, your cloud chart is going to have a big thing about rec centers, because that's what you're asking about. Of course, many people know that this isn't the proper role of government to be funding these kinds of things for the city. That's for businesses to be taken care of, not the city. I believe this is a fun, great thing for the privileged here in Spanish Fork, but I, maybe you should have told every child that came through for their backpacks, or everybody at Tabitha's Way, hey, your parents might not be able to live here anymore because your rent's going up. You might not be able to afford food at the grocery store because your rent's going up. Did you tell that to them when they were getting their backpacks? I'm a property owner, and I also own a rental property, and I'm one of those property owners who I try to keep my mortgage as low as possible. But I've recently given my renters their first raise in over eight years because property taxes have gone up, and so I likely will have to raise the mortgage again because of property taxes. If anything, I think it should go to a vote, although I don't think it's right to have my neighbors vote on if I should be paying more taxes. And the privileged people who can afford to go to the pool every day, and, and I think often many people aren't even realizing, hey, yeah, I'm getting this property tax, but I'm also going to have to pay to go to it. And anyways, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff. My name's Landon Took. I've been so impressed by all the comments tonight in regards to the, this taxation hearing. Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to serve on what was called the Aquatic Recreation and Senior Center Advisory Committee. We've been referring to it tonight as a recre, as a rec center committee. I say those words because that's what you all care about, is more than just a rec center. New senior center, you know, aquatics, a new pool, so forth. So there's a lot more to it, and it's been good to talk through that tonight in more detail. Working with the committee and the Parks and Rec Leadership Team, you know, those, those months was absolutely an incredible experience. They, they care so much about this project, just as, as you do. And they put us to work as committee members, they sent us around to all the different rec centers to visit them. I took my family with me, Springville, Provo, Orem. We really, you know, did our homework, did our research. I learned so much. And giving that feedback is part of what could potentially be a rec center for us here in Spanish Fork was powerful for me. I, I just, I can't say enough positive about it. I shared my journey online on social media as I was on this committee, getting a lot of feedback. And overall, the takeaways that I received were positive. And in fact, people are excited about it. You know, Spanish Fork's growing, we cannot stop that, but we can ensure growth, you know, we grow responsibly, and that we maintain to, you know, be the greatest community anywhere, in my opinion. Three months ago, after serving on the committee, I, I had a phone call one day with our city manager, Seth Perrins, and it was, it was fantastic because I really wanted to make sure I understood, I had a clear picture of, you know, what it would look like. How would we fund this rec center? And we would talk through everything we've talked through tonight, the different avenues we have to fund such a project. Just a quick recap. fund such a project. Just a quick recap, sales tax, RAP tax, Nebo School District, other donors, impact fees, and of course, a small increase in property tax. I mean, how lucky are we? I just, I've been amazed by all of the different amazing avenues we have and incredible ways that we can, we can create something that will change so many lives for the positive. In conclusion, my last 45 seconds, as part of my homework, serving on that committee, I, I spoke with mayors and other Parks and Rec departments of cities who have rec centers. And I just said, please tell me, what, what is the best advice? What are the, what are the greatest takeaways I can pass along to my city council, to my city leaders? And they, I had seven things. So just quickly, they said, listen to your citizens. I love, I love that we're doing that. You're doing that right now. You're listening to everybody, all sides. They said, when you build a rec center, choose revenue drivers, which are fitness and recreational aquatics. Those can help you potentially become profitable. That is the hope. I believe it's absolutely possible. I've seen it in other rec centers. I, I'm super confident about that. I know it's a concern for some. Third thing is, they said, as far as key to success is to have a combination indoor and outdoor aquatics, so pool. They said that's critical. That has been part of our plan of the, the, the committee I served on, is to have an indoor and outdoor pool. So that's there. They said, build, they said, build durable finishes to your building, you know, so you don't have to do maintenance, you know, a lot of these centers have to do a lot of maintenance. They, and I know that's something that, that you will take into serious consideration. Last three quickly, they said, you know, when it comes to fees for residents who paid, or, you know, or people outside of Spanish Fork to come to, to visit, you know, give resident discounts. I know that's going to be part of what we consider. Hire and utilize the best talent to not only build the rec center, but also to, you know, staff it for facility operations. That will happen. In, in our conversations with Dale and the, and the other leadership here, it's, I know that's going to happen. And then lastly, they said, make your rec center your own success story. Make it your own brand. And we have so much goodness in Spanish Fork to implement and to put into a rec center that we build. And I, my, my motives align with yours, with this effort with the rec center, in that I want to create an environment for our families to learn, to play, to thrive. You know, we already have an amazing sense of community here in Spanish Fork, and I am convinced that this rec center will take that to the next level. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else?
I started the meeting here. I was here before, and then unfortunately, I had another commitment, so I'm glad you guys hadn't finished yet. So thank you for everybody.
We're still going.
I appreciate that. So I'm Edis Hill. Live up towards Maple Mountain High. And I've looked at my, my proposed tax situation here, and mine goes up by about 300 bucks. It's gonna be about $300 for that. And I just want to place the thought that I can actually go to Provo Rec Center or De Vosse and spend that same amount of money and get a membership there with either one of those facilities. I know it's a traveling to Provo, but I probably can do the same thing. But if I have this proposed tax, I'll sell the tax and then still have to pay another membership fee if I want an annual membership fee, or a monthly fee, or a per visit fee. I'm sure that's gonna have some type of opportunity for that. So that's my biggest thought is, yes, I guess somebody was talking about if you're the winner or the loser. I guess I'm the winner because I get more. Get to pay more instead of the $48. So with that being said, but I can take that same 300 bucks and have a membership fee somewhere else and not have that 300 additional dollars that we'll have for membership fees here at Spanish Fork. I do like the thought. I know a lot of people probably have brought up vote. It was voted for in 2015. Would love that to happen again because, yeah, you sent out a few flyers or a few surveys. Great. That's an opportunity for some people to speak. And in that survey, you said if you had $100, or propose $100. So if you give me 100 bucks, I'll be more than happy to spend that on the, but if it's their own money, that may change that survey, saying if you have, if you have to pay your own money or raise your taxes to that, would you spend that money on these recreational items? They may not spend that. But if you, somebody gives them 100 bucks, yeah, sure, I'll, I'll divvy it out. So that's another thought process. I was thinking from the presentation, it wasn't their money that they were given or proposed to be given and sharing it between the different areas. So would love to see it. I'm not opposed to it, not against it, but dollars wise, I end up paying a lot more than more people do. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone else? I don't know if, yeah, yeah. Did we lose anybody out in, is anybody out in the foyer still?
There's two people still out there.
Somebody ought to ask them, Tyler, if, if they're in there, they, they count. There's not a lot of room in here. All right.
I'm Brett Bills. You know me. To know me is to love me. I spent a lot of time talking with council members and the mayor over the last couple of years. You probably expect me to get up here and to say, don't raise my taxes. That's what I'm gonna say. Please for the love, stop raising property taxes. Property taxes are the most un-American way for a, an institution to take money from somebody. You're mortgaging their home. You are making them not a free person. So you probably expect me to say that. I'm not going to. That would be out of line here. You probably expected me to point out that Councilman Euler and I were, were in the last election together, and when he was point blank asked if he wanted to raise taxes for recreation, he said, ah, citizens should be able to vote on that. You probably expect me to say that. Mayor, I've told you we should have a vote. Probably expect me to say that here. I'm not going to. I am impressed with the financing. I'm impressed with what the city has done over the last few years to spread this out. I am not anti-recreation. As one of the loudest voices against the 2015 project, I wasn't against recreation. I was against taxes, and I was violently against property taxes. Voice similar concern, which, good job avoiding the last concern. I was pulled into the last one because of the whole pizza thing. So I didn't see any food on this. Thank you. So, so I appreciate the work that's been put into that, to this, to spread this out. We are a community. We have community needs. We want to do things that are good for our community. We just came off of yesterday's. It was amazing. A lot of that was funded by donations. A lot of that was funded by taxes. And it was the place to be. I mean, Spanish Fork is a great place. So I'm impressed with what's been done to spread this out. I am concerned that, that we are, actually, I mean, I came here today because Dale asked me to, and Pierre asked me to. And Pierre and I sat on that committee together, and, and we, we sat on one side. He wants a big pool, and I, and I want just a regular pool. When Seth said we could replace 14 million bucks, I said, sweet, let's do that. I'm stuck in 1996, apparently. But I do appreciate that, that you have been, what's the word? Now the timer's coming. Appreciate that you have, have put work into this. There's been a lot of thought into this. As far as being on the committee, I really liked working with Dale. I like talking with him. I do not feel that that citizens committee has made a difference with the project, except for Landon might get a racquetball court that he wants. Dale had said, no, Ryan might get them. So Landon might be the winner there. But I really appreciate the work that's been put in there. My family benefits from the work that Dale does. To say Dale doesn't want this is ridiculous. Dale wants this. Like Dale wants, Dale can taste this. And, and I would want nobody else running our Parks and Rec than someone who wants that. That's what we've hired him to do. So I applaud Dale for the work he's doing. Love working with him. I do worry about the property taxes. I'm gonna echo what TFL said. Please stop raising property taxes. This is the fourth truth in taxation hearing this committee has had in the last five years. We are spending money now more than we ever have. Please be, please be cognizant of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Brett. Anyone else? Were you the one we called in from the outside? All right.
Sam Martin. So I had no idea what I was getting into. So, but I just been sitting out there. I figure I've been here long enough. I might as well speak.
Sure.
I would absolutely say I'm against the tax. I am not against progress, right? I love the comments everybody's had about whether it's health, or benefits, or friends, or family. Like, the, the growth is awesome. But for me to not be able to choose how to spend my money, it goes against everything inside of me. Taking a tax from me is not my choice. If it's coming out because it's a tax, it is not a choice. If I want to go to rec center, that's my choice, but taking it from me is not my choice. So I don't go to Provo Rec Center because I can't pay for that. That's my choice, right? I don't have that money. I don't go. But if it's taken from me, there's no choice in that. There's a limit to how much I make. Some people can make more. That's not a problem. I understand that. But for the rest of us, it affects us. I want to have my choice in what I want to say. So if it's built, don't take it from me. Let me find a way to pay for it. Not take it from me. That's, that's all I can think of, is it's a choice, and I don't feel like I have it. And I would love to be able to make that choice. Finances change in the future. I'd love to be able to pay for it, right? That's a difference. But it's my choice. And I will hope that everybody takes that into consideration. Allow everybody to have their choice, because finances are not the same for everybody. That's everything I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
My name's Mary Lou Brandon. And being as everybody else on this focus committee that's here has spoken, I think you need to know where I come from. I am on a fixed income. I have lived 99% of my life in Spanish Fork, and I am on a fixed income. As a member of this focus committee, my big thing was, can senior citizens afford this tax increase? Because we knew there was, there had to be some to it. And Dale and the rest of them will tell you that I was very adamant that it needed to be as low as possible so every citizen can afford that, that increase. When I got my taxes this year, of course, they went up. At least, it was over $200. I wasn't really happy about that. But I know progress is progress. But I really, and I, I am for the, the rec center. You have to know that. I, for many years before COVID, my husband and I went to Provo and, and used their facility. And I am thrilled that we are, we will have this in Spanish Fork. I just want people to know that this, that this city is run well, and they are looking out for any way they can to fund this that will not put a burden on our citizens. And that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Anyone else? Once, twice? Thank you. Okay. I entertain a motion if there's no more public that.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle. Close the public hearing. Seconded by Councilman Gordon. Roll call vote to close the public hearing? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're out of public hearing. Discussion up here. We have some questions. We can discuss this, ask some questions of staff, get some of the answers to maybe some of the questions that are up here.
Seth, can you just do your presentation again?
Start, start from slide three. Go to 53.
No, let's not do that. Can I, I'll have, I, I hope you answered. So there's some questions there that were actually answered by you. So I, I hope you made pretty good notes. I didn't make as good as notes.
I have 16 pages.
Okay. So I, I want to answer maybe a couple of these. Understanding that the rec center is not built, there's still a lot of decisions that's gonna have to take place if we build the rec center. Even if we vote this tonight, there's still a long road down that we have to do and cover. And when they talk about maintenance fees, in a conversation with the councilman and Councilman Marshall made it so clear when we were talking one day, this, if this was a, if this was to be Spanish Fork's rec center, the one thing that we absolutely have to do, and a couple of you has mentioned that, is this has to be available to every Span, every citizen of Spanish Fork. From the very highest in means to the very lowest, they have to be able to enjoy this facility. And if that's something that's Spanish Fork makes it their own and comes up with some ways to do this, and Shane March, Shane said it best. I loved what he said, and I probably won't say it best, but he just said, if we don't do that, then we failed. That our opportunity to do this, it has to be. When I was talking to one of the business communities, one of the business owners in the community, we have a whole bunch, that doesn't, that don't live in Spanish Fork City. So they're out of town, or you might say, but they have a business in town that serves the needs of Spanish Fork. We collect sales tax and property tax from that business. And his biggest concern, and he says, I'll be going to the rec center. If you build a rec center, I'll use it. He currently goes to another one. But possibly, that's something that we also need to consider down the road, is these businesses, they put a lot of money into our community. They need to be a part of this. But the one thing that has to do is our citizens, from top to bottom, and especially those, Mary Lou just referred to, our senior citizens, they have to be able to go to this center, and we've got to come up with some ways to do that. We've had some suggestions. We've had some ideas. And, and hopefully, we'll go forward with that and do that and make that accomplished, that it's not $1,200 for a membership for a year. You can't afford that. It's, it's gotta be something that's affordable. And this rec center has gotta be Spanish Fork's. And I agree with, and I won't even remember, I can't remember. I'm very bad. But they said, you gotta make it Spanish Fork City. I think it was yours, Pierre. But anyway, it is. It's gotta be Spanish Fork City. We don't do anything like anybody else, even though we compare to other cities. When we build something, do something, you know we do it better than, than other cities, because we make it Spanish Fork's.
It's a good way of putting it. I've put it before where people say, are you trying to keep up with the Joneses? And I'm like, we are the Joneses. People are trying to keep up with us. We're Spanish Fork. They ask us about a lot of different things, especially our Parks and Rec Department, about how, how we are successful in it. Maybe just a couple of questions that I highlighted, and maybe this is a kind of a two for one. Anna, Anna and Tia had a couple of questions that seemed to intermingle with me of why wasn't it proposed this way last time? I think, I think we can touch on that. And Tia's question of the sales tax, or, excuse me, of, of, you know, recession fears and things like that. But I think that's a, a point that is considerable to make sure citizens know from, from 2017, doesn't seem that long ago. I think I had one less kid in 2017, but to now, there is a big difference in sales tax revenue in Spanish Fork. And if you rewind that five years beyond that, it's a, it's an even bigger difference. And, and so paying attention to what this city's doing and, and where it's kind of grown up over the past, the, the short answer, and I'll just kind of give it for you, Seth, rather than specific numbers, but those, those numbers of what we didn't have in 2015 for sales tax revenue versus what we have today is a huge component of how you can pay for an amenity like this. And, and so you start thinking about some of those places where not only we shop, obviously, it's our sales tax revenue too, put into the city, but those businesses report over 50% of their patrons do not have our zip code, right? Do not, are not shopping from Spanish Fork City. So it's a big difference in, of revenue that was not, not readily available in 2017 as much as it is in, in 2022. Any questions that you've highlighted that you'd like Seth, somebody to touch on?
Rap tax reapproval question came up.
Good question.
Water, sorry.
Yeah, come on.
Rap tax reapproval and issues with water. I think that was Alan that maybe asked that.
So on, maybe keying in still on what you were talking about, Mayor, we, it's hard to go back to 2015 and say, why didn't we propose it this way versus the way we did? Obviously, that's done, and that's the way it was proposed then. And when I hear that question, I don't know exactly the specifics there that she was asking about, but in terms of the, I'll maybe focus on the term, in terms of the, the diversity of, of the funds, not so much maybe in the bond structure and things like that. But to your point, we, we didn't have the sales tax growth that we have had in, in new stores. And cities are funded significantly by sales tax. And, and cities are funded significantly by sales tax. For every, if you go to the store and spend a dollar, you get, you pay seven cents in taxes. Of that seven cents, one penny, uh, potentially comes to Spanish Fork. Half of that penny comes to Spanish Fork because you spent that dollar in Spanish Fork. That's guaranteed. The other half of that penny goes into a state population pool. And we get, based on our population, uh, whatever that is. And, and currently, um, we, I, I want to say it's somewhere Jordan, around ninety-one percent of, ninety-three percent of that penny. So we get, I'm going to, I'm going to cut a penny into smaller pennies. But yeah, we, we get ninety-three percent of that penny. We don't get the full penny. And that's because we get more money from the point of sale than we get from population. And so that's a good thing in terms of, of how well that point of sale is doing. That was not the case in two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and fifteen, our sales tax to population revenue was probably not ninety-three cent, or ninety-three percent was probably, uh, one oh-five, maybe one oh-seven. So we were on the, we got more money from population than point of sale. So that is a, a big deal. The rap tax is a significant difference. That was not a, an option. So, um, we just didn't have the diversity of the resources that we, we have today. So that's maybe the simplest answer to that question. I think in terms of recession, I love that question. I think that's a great concern to have. As our sales tax revenue has grown, in terms of economics, that's the most elastic revenue we have. So as the economy turns, sales tax will slow down, maybe it'll dip. And so a couple of years ago, in our budgeting strategies and working with you, of course, we've, we've set a very conservative reserve on our sales tax. And so we, we, we reserve the, the last fifteen percent. This year, two and a half million dollars for one-time projects, not ongoing expenses, to help save against the potential for a recession. And so in our current budgets, we have, and that's a good thing because we have one-time projects that we need to do. But if there's a recession, we need to put things off, we can put off those one-time projects. We can't let a police officer go, or we can't let a firefighter go, or we can't let a parks guy go. We still have those expenses. And so we've, we've developed our budget strategies in such a way that we, we are prepared for those based on our history and then some. We try to be very conservative. And then a little more conservative than that, uh, i- is our, is our intent there. So as I look in the past, which I'm grateful that I have a better ball, crystal ball, looking in the past than I do for the future, that has been our guide in a number of things that we've done. Not just in this project that we've been talking about today, but in our budget in, in general. How has the history been? And how can we protect against what we know has happened? And frankly, I think two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve is a great lesson in, you know, what to prepare for. And, and we have, we have prepared our budgets, not with this project, but in the last couple of years for, uh, the ability to weather that kind of change. I hope it doesn't happen. I hope we don't have a recession. I, I'm comfortable if our economy in Utah slows down a little bit because it has really been hot. But as I read different economics information, certainly a recession nationally is possible. But in Utah, there are things that are just so strong that at least for the short term, uh, they're not talking about it that way. But if it does, if there were a recession to come, then we've built in a lot of systems.
I wrote down a thought with that. We're currently building a transfer station, thirty-three million dollar building with Provo, Springville, Spanish, Mapleton, Salem, Woodland Hills. We're all member cities on that. We, our bids are coming in for different items as we're building that building. And one item I wrote down was our scales. We had budgeted a half a million dollars for. And we received three proposals for those. And last week, they came in at four hundred thousand. So, um, I, I just write that down because I hope that if there's opportunity for cost savings as a result of, you know, i- if there's, there are one thing to look positive at as a downturn can sometimes afford us some money savings, correct? I just, I just wanted to point that out as well.
I think the, uh, one of the other questions that I think Ms. Moonhand was.
That's what I was going to next.
Will all of the property texts, will all of this specific property text go to a bond payment? And the answer is yes.
Yeah.
One hundred percent of it.
Yep.
It won't go anywhere else.
Yep.
Next, oh man, I'm scared to get old.
Want me to zoom out for you? You want to zoom out for you? Take them.
That was, that was bad. Another question was, will we be taxed again for this? We don't have the, we don't, that's not a plan of ours right now. We think that we have the funding package in place to allow us to make the bond payments. It's not recession-proof, but it's recess resilient. So we think that this is the one-time shot that we need.
And I think that, uh, has been your, your direction, of course, to us that as we looked this year at the possibility of a property tax adjustment, what's the highest number that it could be, should be, but also the lowest? Right? Get it, get it to the right location. Don't shoot too high, and we then look at having more money than we need or, or needing to potentially bring it down. Don't shoot too low, so we have to come back and do it again. And, and so that's where we were targeting. And, and I think it's, um, maybe insightful to share that in one of the committee meetings that I was, that I attended and talked about what a funding structure could look like. I, I can't remember the number I was using. So you guys that were there, maybe tell me what, but back then, I think I was using something less than seven. But some of the, is that right? Were you, yeah, I feel like it was somewhere in the six, but not seven. But as we got closer to the property tax timetables where we get the certified tax rates, we get property values and all those things. And the county shares with us those growth numbers that, that have come in. We were, we didn't need to be in the six-dollar range then. Those new numbers and, and the, the results of that were, is the four ninety that we're talking about. So I, I was very pleased with that in terms of, when we put together that initial, what could it, should it look like? And what would those numbers be? That it wasn't seven dollars or six ninety, whatever. It ended up being a couple of dollars less. And, and that was the target that we were trying to hit. Hit the mark right where it needs to be, not too high, not, not too low, so that we don't have to do this again.
Seth, I appreciate the comment that was brought up about other types of taxes that are maybe less restrictive or less burdening on the citizens. Rap tax is up in twenty-twenty-eight, is that right? Twenty-twenty-eight?
Correct, yep.
Is it possible at that point, when that goes up for another vote, to, to propose that be higher than it normally would with the expectation that that increase of a rap tax would result in a decrease in this property tax?
Great question. I think the short answer to that is no. The state law allows for that rap tax to only be one-tenth of a percent. And so it can't be point eleven or point twelve. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, so it can only be point, it can only be one-tenth of a percent. So the percent can't change. However, as rap tax continues to grow, if you wanted to, in a future, in a future budget year, say, let's lower property taxes and increase the amount that we're taking from the rap tax because it's continued to grow. Maybe it's beyond our projections and, and the like. You can, you can do that because it will continue to grow as, as additional stores come or as, as sales continue to change. It will grow as it has in the past, and, and I think you can plan for that.
So if down the road, years down the road, we don't have any additional major capital projects that need to be funded, but we are bringing in additional revenues, we can take those revenues and apply those towards projects that we're, we currently have?
Absolutely, yeah. You, as a council, control that purse. That's one of the purviews of your responsibility. So you can, you can reallocate that if you want to, for sure.
Mr. Westman, I had a question, sorry, about the way, the, maybe the ability to waive property tax. A great question. I think there was a slide that does talk about property tax abatement. So those.
Yeah.
Those in our community that.
Yeah, there is a process this, the, the county follows. Property taxes are administered completely by the county. And so values and, and abatements, all that runs through the county. I was reading somewhere that the county was encouraging, if you feel your valuation is wrong, speak up, reach out to them. And, and you, you've got that on your tax notice. You can call that number, you can go to that website, whatever you feel comfortable doing. But that absolutely should be something a resident does. If they feel that about, that valuation is wrong, or they have an issue. And then if they have, that's one side of it. If they have concerns on the other side, then that, they, they can also point you to some additional resources, uh, that are available.
Along that same line, one day I said to Shane, I'm like, I had this great idea and Shane had the same idea. So it wasn't this, my great idea.
I'm so worried now.
But we had, I've had so many people say, I'll gladly pay for my neighbor, these people that are in favor of it. And so we talked about potentially an account where if, if a large donor were to, uh, say, I'm willing to give a million dollars to an account. And that account can generate interest. And that would then be an opportunity for, uh, people on fixed incomes or even single parents with children to be able to, uh, get an opportunity. And I think when I said, said it to Shane, I said something like, you know, the fixed income, and you were like, and, well, my, I was thinking of the kids. And we both kind of looked at each other and we were both talking that through. Is that legal? Is it?
Basically, to, an account that offers scholarships to attend and make sure that it's available to all the citizens in, in Spanish Fork.
It's legal because we do it for military personnel. We waive their, their utility fees, right? And so.
Yeah.
I just said that, Vaughn, did you see that? He's shaking his head as an attorney going. Brandon, don't ever say it's legal, please. He's super nervous now. What, we, we haven't had a lot of discussion about that. But is that possible?
Absolutely.
And I would love, love, love for that account to.
And are you talking more on the annual membership type of side of things? Or are you talking about property taxes or potential both?
That's where Shane was, Shane was like, I want, I want the kid that can't afford to use it to use it. And I, you know, which I agree with. I was saying, I want the widow who can't afford the property tax increase to be able to afford the property tax increase.
I'm just spitballing with you as I'm listening. But we are bound by state laws in how we can, uh, use our monies and, and how well our monies can grow. At the best of times, I think our interest rate on our, on our money is two and a half percent in the best of times. And in the worst of times, um, this is good, but our interest rate's about point four percent. Right? It's not negative, so that's good. And that's one of the reasons why the state legislature restricts our ability to, to have, uh, our funds grow. There's no speculation in our money. Probably, uh, the city could do that, the city could administer that. If there was somebody that wanted to give a sizable donation, it would probably be better for them to create some other entity where they could then manage those funds and they could set the rules themselves and then create some kind of a relationship with the city that they could potentially pay those fees somehow for them. But that's just spitballing ideas out here with you. We have some kind of wonky rules that end up making those kinds of things potentially less effective than what a private sector or nonprofit individual could do. But that being said, I think those are great ideas. But we should certainly consider if, especially if that kind of, that kind of gesture or that kind of donation becomes a reality.
Well, the Rotary, actually, I was talking to Bronco at Parks and Rec last night about this because I had this thought about just the Parks and Rec program. And the Rotary has that scholarship program for kids. And they said they have just gobs of money sitting there that kids aren't using. So principals or kids need to let the Parks and Rec program know that there's a need because that is available.
Yeah, it starts there, starts with people, one, people knowing that there's a resource, and then two, that the resource knows there's a need. So, yeah.
Now, while we're on that, before I lose that train of thought, I do want to reiterate what I've told to a, a few people that I've talked to about this. The, you talk to communities that have a center like this. And the largest benefit to the portion of the community for a center like this are typically families that can't afford a lot of anything else. So when I'm talking to Provo Rec Center people, when I'm talking to Orem Rec Center people, when I'm talking to Rec Centers outside of Utah, um, start doing the math in a, right now, it's hard to imagine there will ever be a February and it won't be a hundred degrees every single day because it's a hundred degrees every single day. But it will come, and there will be February where, uh, if you want to go do something in February.
Costs money.
It costs a lot of money to do something in February. It costs a lot of money to try to get into any winter sport or, or any winter activity. We obviously have an affordable Parks and Rec program that we try to get kids and, and people, uh, indoors and recreating together and a great relationship with our school district to do that. That's, that goes a period of time, that goes a period of weeks and months. Then those kids, you know, are off and doing something else, you hope, right? And not getting in trouble. One of the most attractive things about something like this is the kid. And I know we talk a lot about pools and Pierre, you like pools. I get that, right? We talk a lot about pools. They are the most expensive part of this center. They're, they're heavily used too. But anymore, um, the basketball court portion, the open gym portion of a community center is, feels just as big to me, or even bigger. In, uh, this community, you either better have a parent that is in leadership in the local church, or you better know, you better have a teacher for a parent or somebody that's at the school that can let you in and play open gym basketball. Because it doesn't exist. It doesn't exist unless you have that. And if you were to go ask, hey, can I go play in the church? Can I go play in the school? Sorry, no, you can't. Even in the school year, no, it closes at this time, right? A place for kids to, to go, uh, in an impressionable age demographic in an, in a, in, in maybe not the best of, of financial circumstances is something that's always been, uh, top of my mind. And it, and it's been confirmed with, with the centers that I talked to as well, that, that that's a, that's a big, a big get for those people that maybe are struggling.
Mayor, I want to talk a little bit about, a lot of the focus has been on swimming pool, rec center, that portion of it. But I'm, I'm the luckiest council member up here because I have the opportunity to serve on the senior, senior citizen board. And I get to go hang out with some pretty cool people down at the senior center. And anybody that has had the opportunity to go down there on a member mill can see that we're running out of space at the senior center. They, the seniors' membership has grown thirty percent in the last year and a half. And as Spanish Fork continues to grow, so does our senior demographic. And so do more, more memberships at the senior center. So we may be talking about, you know, a rec center and is that necessary? Yes or no? Is that the proper role of government? What about our seniors? When they need to go down or would like to go down and, and socialize? I can't tell you how many individuals I've gone and sat down next to that are widows and this is their only opportunity to get out and socialize and, and visit with other people is at the senior center. And so, yeah, rec center is one question, but our seniors deserve a place to gather. That's, I'm, I'm very, I have a very strong opinion on that. Is that the proper role of government for, for us to provide a place for our seniors to gather? Again, I don't know. That question is very debatable, and I don't know that any of us can answer that. But what I do know is we, we, our seniors need a place that they can get together, that they can socialize and that they can enjoy a good meal. And this will provide that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a list.
Marshall?
I have.
Well, how long's your list?
Yeah, we're, we're due on the clock.
Put, put this clock up.
I'm a little soapboxy maybe, but.[1764.48]
That's fine.
That's okay?
Yep.
All right. So first of all, thank you all for coming. Thanks for the comments. This is not easy. This is not a easy conversation to, to discuss, to debate. We don't take it lightly. We 100% have listened tonight. When I get through this, you'll probably think that I had made a decision before I got here. And you're probably not wrong, but I still listened. When I, I ran this last year to, to be a member of the city council. And in that, in that running, at every public event, a question came up, what's your position on a pool? I remember the 12 of us at the park, at the library on the back. I think Emily was there in the front row when we got asked, what's your position on the park? I made it very, very clear.
Park pool?
Yeah.
What about the park?
Um, what's your position on the pool? And I made it very, very clear. I support a pool. I support a rec center. And if it means having to raise taxes to do it, I think it's a good investment in our community. And I've never wavered from that. No, it's not a mandate to do something, but I believe that because that was a conversation that happened throughout the entire election and then I was elected, I'm trying to fulfill part, I'm trying to fulfill that election commitment. And so I feel like that I am trying to represent the community that I have been elected to represent. And I was very clear throughout that entire process where I stood. And a little bit about the why, I feel like that. And some of you have heard this story before, but I'm going to tell it again because now is the time on the record. And, whoo, it was easier in the car to talk about this. Um, so there is no way in the world that I would be sitting here today if a, excuse me, a former city council, a former city staff or whomever would not have made the decision to build the ballparks down where they're built. That, that decision made, I don't know when, because they, they were here, but when we moved in here 45 years ago, that decision changed my trajectory in life. Not many people know this part about me and it's a little embarrassing, but when I was in ninth grade, I was getting around a 2.3 GPA. I was squeaking by. I had very little directions. Both my parents worked. They left me to make all the decisions. Probably not the best thing for a ninth grader to make. But I, there, I think there was actually a semester I got a 1.8. It was, it was a rough, it was a rough year. The next year, the next three years of high school, I didn't get below a 3.8. And why? Because I made the baseball team. Why did I make a baseball team? Because somebody, somewhere said, we're going to invest in our community and gave me a chance to do something different, to, to change my trajectory. And I'm sitting here today. I have the family I have. I have the home that I have because somebody did that. To me, that's what this is. This is not, I understand it's a tax. I get that and I 100% understand and I get where, where bread is coming from. It is a, is a bad place to probably come up with the funding, but it's the mechanism we have. It is 100% an investment in our community, in our children, in our future. And if we can't make those investments as a community, we're not going to have a community. That's what this is about to me. And I understand it's a tax burden. I understand it's a burden to, to some of those out there, but it is a good thing for our community and will be a healthy community because of it. So you think about what Mike just said and I greatly appreciate that. This gives somebody a place to go that they didn't have before. It gives someone a place to get out their, their, their tablet, their, their computer or whatever and socialize in real life, right? In person. Go to the pool last year, any, any given day and it's packed. When I ran, the question I got almost as much as, do you support a pool, is how do you keep Spanish Fork a small town community? When I moved here, when we moved here, there was 9,000 people. Now there's 47,000 people. How do you continue that small town feel? Well, you make investments that bring community members together. You created a celebration that we just had and you invest in it. You take my money and your money and we put it together and we make something good of our community. That's what this is. It's not a building. It's not a pool. It's a place to gather, to recreate, to socialize. So raising taxes should never, ever be easy. But in this case, for this very, very specific reason, I think it's the right thing to do. And I know for sure this investment will have a huge impact on our community in a very positive way and keep us that small hometown that we always want, even when we're 60,000 people. So I'm going to stop rambling.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall.
I'll go next.
That's a woman back. Yeah.
Not quite as long. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's scary, Emily, for everyone, I think, to stand up here. And oftentimes it's scary for us to be up here having all you stare at us, just thinking, what are you going to do? So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your emails and reaching out. You, you were heard. I think we're making different decisions, decisions rooted in different values. Just like what you were saying, I love, love that personal story. And we have looked on both sides of the coin. For five years, we did not discuss anything about the pool. We, from 15 to what, 20? 20, was that when the survey was? Because Nebo District said we had probably till 27 with the pool. So, so that's what we wanted. But then when we were told the pool was going to come down, we started talking about what, what do our residents want? And so we created a survey. And obviously everyone doesn't feel like that was a valid survey, but that's what we took, we took it seriously. We took this data and made a decision, let's move forward. And because of the rhetoric back in 2015, it made our decision like, it was what, 15, $16 a month back then? And we told staff, we'll consider it, but we need to come down. Our residents are not going to be happy if we're paying that much money. Seth said, what if we could do $6 to $8? And we're like, mm, 6. And he's like, mm, 8. And I mean, like, we pushed hard. We pushed back. Try and do something closer to 6. We think our residents would be a little happier. We, we knew everyone wasn't going to love this idea, but over the course of the years, people were coming to us when the pool was coming down last year, the year before that, when they knew it was coming down. That's what residents are also coming to us. So I know some of you come up here and say, you're not listening to us, but we're also trying to listen to the other residents as well. So we listened and when staff was able to get it down to $4.90, we, I was happy with that number. For me, it can't be just about money. I, I won't go into everything and reiterate what, you know, you just said it so eloquently. This can't be just about money. It has to be the, an investment in our future. I think Paul Dayton phrased it, time is something we can't buy more of. And so I'm, I'm for it. I, I think there's still a lot of room, a lot of things we need to look at, a lot of details. I want to say, this committee that we gathered to give feedback, your feedback is super important to me and I would like to hear your feedback directly. If you feel like staff didn't listen, please let us know so we can come in together and, and look at what, what you guys would want in this rec center. So that's important. Thank you for the time and the input that you guys have, have shared with us. And I think that's, I'll, I'll wrap it over there.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon?
Mayor, I, I looked out and I looked at Pierre and Pierre and I lived in a town home here in town 20 plus years ago. We were neighbors. And he moved to the other side of town and we moved on the other side of the tracks. But he used to work for my father-in-law in Provo as a mechanic. And I remember one day Pierre said to me, he's like, it's sometimes hard to sell mechanic work because you have your car fixed and you don't really have much to show for the $5,000 engine. You know, it still just runs down the road, right? So it's kind of a hard sell. I remember Pierre telling me that. Well, the other day I was over at my brother-in-law's in Pleasant Grove and I took a picture of his city flyer on his fridge for proposed truth and taxation hearing for $4.50 for road maintenance. Road maintenance, two, two police officers and two full-time firefighter EMS paramedics. And we had this conversation today about how you could, you could be less transparent. You could be somewhat hoodwinked, right? But, and we could, we could have used the money that we just recently used to hire, to approve, you know, full-time fire and ambulance and, and use that to tug at people's heartstrings. You'll have something to show for a, a tax increase, I guess is what I'm saying. As I looked at Pierre and I thought of that, I remembered him telling me that. It was sometimes tough. Because my wife, every time we go visit her family in Pleasant Grove, the roads are just awful. They're just awful. But we're already doing good with our roads in Spanish Fork, right? We're already doing good with so many other things that are so much, we are praised and awarded all over the state by other communities and other cities as a result of our roads. And so another community is trying to fix something and I hope that, I hope that this process has been transparent from the start. We've, you know, we've talked about this. I think the process, I made this comment to, to some of the council members and the mayor the other day, that I think it's backwards. We've approved this, we've approved our budget in June. We've had public hearings and then we have this truth and taxation hearing, right? We, we started talking, right, like Stacy says, please get it down, get it down, figure it out, figure it out. But it feels like maybe the, the public hearings, you know, should be more on the front end if we're really, you know, obviously we're following state law. But, but it feels like, you know, with this, I've got something that's going to be great for our community with, with, with this proposed tax increase, not like taking my car into Pierre and having $1,000 worth of repairs and then it just, still just runs down the road. I didn't get to show anything different for it. So I appreciated, I also just appreciated, I already mentioned, I already mentioned some of the recession things with Seth. And I think that's really all the thoughts that I have right now, other than I just do appreciate. I appreciate hearing from a family member that, you know, comes up and he says it's really hard to, you know, to be here. And, and, but I appreciated, I appreciated everybody that, that fought any anxiety or any family feelings, you know, to be here and speak to the opposite. I'm thinking of 2015 when we were at Larson School and somebody'd get up and say, I want it. And everybody, somebody cheer. And the other side would say, I don't want it. And they'd cheer. I feel like we've came to such a better place as citizens in this town that we can listen to opposition, we can listen to, to opposing opinions and battle it out and still not have an attitude of take my ball and go home. Still our neighbors. We're still, we still see each other at Macy's when we're shopping. And, and that part I appreciate through this process this year, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Gordon. Anything else, Councilman Argyle? You're good? Okay. Before maybe we're talking about a motion, we've talked a lot over the last, it's been, you know, it's been six or seven years or so that we've started an active and healthy program, SF Active and Healthy and the Fit City Program. We've had a fair every year. We've, we've done things that have really tried to focus on both the physical and mental health of our community. And I remember having some early conversations, Seth and I and Dale and, and some of the council members and some, some medical doctors, some, some mental health doctors in a room too. And because when we talked about that grant program that we received some of those funds, our reason to start that movement was to say we want to help improve the physical and the mental health in our community. Because we saw, we saw right around that time, some, some troubling trends. And those trends continue. Those trends continue. We haven't solved them with an active and healthy group or the Fit City Program, but we have trained up QPR trainers. We have taught QPR to churches, to businesses, to schools, to try to help the, the mental and the, the social health, if you will, of our city. And it's always, I'm sure, going to be an uphill battle, just like our physical health i- is an uphill battle. But I definitely see this investment, Councilman Marshall has used the right word. This is an investment in our community. And our community has some credibility about the investments that are put into it. You look at what's around you, what people say they love Spanish Fork about. We've collectively invested our money there and it's, it's got some credibility because the quality of life is second to none. So I'm confident that the council's direction and decision here is just that, is another investment in a decade that investments were made decades ago that we enjoy, that our kids enjoy today. So that's all I've got. Anything else from this body? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion on item three, excuse me, item four A, the resolution of adopting the FY23 budget in the truth and taxation agenda item.
Mayor, we do need a motion on-
Three A.
On three A. Sorry.
Oh, three A?
Yep, we do need a-
Oh, excuse me. So three A, yeah, I skipped that three A. And it does need to specify a fiscal year 2023 property tax rate.
Say the rate?
You do have to say the rate.
A lot of ones?
Yeah.
.001111.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the fiscal year 2023 property tax rate at .001111.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
The property, the fiscal year property tax 2023 is approved at .00111. Item four A, resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget, that's stated to, with the budget to, to have that property tax rate in it, correct? Seth or-
Did I get that right?
Jordan, is that what I'm working at?
Sorry to say that.
You, you got it right. The four ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you got it right.
Oh.
You got it right. He just summarized it.
I missed the summary.
I'm like-
.00111.
We're fine.
One. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Item four A, is the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget with that approved fiscal year 2023 property tax rate? I would entertain a motion.
You're not going to have Seth go through the budget?
I'm happy to do it.
We did the budget meeting in June. It was-
It's on YouTube. You can find it there.
It was more than 50 slides, wasn't it?
It's there.
There was more than that.
I moved to approve the resolution adopting fiscal year 23 budget.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle to adopt the fiscal year 2023 budget. Roll call vote. Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that passes. Okay. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming. I think it's been reiterated here of, of how important the public process is and it's not, it doesn't work without everybody here. So thank you so much.
Mayor, just maybe before you adjourn, there were maybe a handful of questions that maybe they feel like didn't get answered. I'm happy to stick around here and answer them or you can too as well.
Sure. We'll be here. Yeah, we'll be here. I think there, there are some maybe questions that, that if we didn't get to them, please feel, feel free to hang out. We'll be here after we adjourn. Okay.
No closed session?
No closed session.
I move you adjourn.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to adjourn. Roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks.